Good morning. Being 10:00 AM, I hereby call to order the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners meeting for March 28, 2023, to go through the budgets for the 23-24 calendar year. I would ask you to all stand at this time with a pledge of allegiance. I will be leading today. Please join me in saluting the most outstanding flag on this earth. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would ask everyone to please silence their electronic devices so that we don't interrupt any of the speakers. And so, we will start this meeting with a public comment. We only have one item on the administrative agenda today. That's item four, whether or not we get to that or not. So, we'll be taking public comment at the beginning of this meeting. And then, if we get to item four, we'll take public comment after item four is heard and before taking action. And then, we'll have additional closing public comment at the end of the meeting today. So, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin and then a yellow light, which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, we ask you to please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items, which is only number four, that are identified for possible action, again, at closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific agenda item that is on the administrative agenda and identified for possible action, then please provide your public comment when that agenda item is heard. So, at this time, public comment will be taken on those items or within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Do we have any public comment here in chambers?
I'm only here to listen to item one. I did enough budgets in my previous life. I just want to hear what the departments are perceiving and what they're going forward with. And I appreciate all the work and effort, staff. Ms. Willoughby has just been an asset to this community since I've been here. So, also, with the upcoming vacation home rental meeting on April 10 in Tahoe, and now that it's published in the newspaper, and most of the people that have called me that own vacation home rentals have received a letter notifying them, just want to make sure at the April 6 meeting, the process is clear, that this first meeting is a for possible action, which is, my perception is, this is a guidance meeting to take this process and let's just get it done. The next meeting would be a presentation-only first reading and then, of course, an action. Thank you.
It appears everybody knows the routine already, so we ask you to state your name for the record and then print your name so that we can get it clearly into the records.
Good morning. Dave Brady for the record. I'm going to start off the morning with a simple question. How do you build a budget and allocate financial resources absent a current and updated strategic plan? Kind of doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment here in chambers? So, to address your question, Mr. Brady, we hopefully will tackle that as we get through this final, the update on the vacation home ordinance. But yes, that's a priority for the, we just haven't unfortunately had the time to do that, so, yet. But we'll get there. Okay. Okay. Since there is no further public comment, we'll go to, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda as presented.
Sub move.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Noah Satt, seconded by Commissioner Rice, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes five to zero. And we'll go to the administrative agenda. Item number one, for presentation only, presentations by county department directors on the operations of their respective departments, including departmental goals and objectives, achievements, benchmarks, and performance objectives. This is being led by our chief financial officer, Ms. Terry Willoughby. Ms. Willoughby, you're going to be speaking to us a lot today, so.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, we did reach out to department directors. It was not required this year to have any presentations, and we have no presentations from departments today.
You're telling me that item one is done?
That would be correct.
Then we will go to item number two for presentation only, an overview of the county's budget process and background information, once again, being conducted by CFO Terry Willoughby.
For the record, for those following along online, this starts on page 262 of the supplemental agenda packet for today, March 28.
Thank you. Terry Willoughby and Jenny Cartwright here, for the record. This is a overview of the entire budget process for all funds of the county, and with that I'll get started. The agenda is a general overview, fund accounting overview, some of you have heard this, some of you have not, but for the public, it's there, revenue sources and overview of expenditures, fund balance, budgeting, our capital improvement program, debt management, and we can have any follow-up questions after the presentation, or stop me as we're going along. So, differences, many people are used to budgeting for a business, and there are some differences between government and business budgeting. You have to think of the county as a multimillion-dollar corporation that does a million different things. We do trash, we do sewer, we do utilities, we do some things that don't make money, whereas a business you would go into with a profit motive. You're not going to go into enter something that doesn't make any money. However, in government, we are mandated to do some things like indigent defense that is not a moneymaker, but it is required by law. So, that's kind of an overview of the differences. But, little bit by the numbers, this number of departments, 23, number of funds that are budgeted is 39. We have, do have more funds, but this is all that's included in the budget. 152 divisions or departments or budgetary units, 1,350 expenditure accounts, and 850 revenue accounts. It does speak about the team members in the adopted budget and the proposed. This will change by the time we get to the overview of the final. This includes some of the China Spring ARPA-funded positions that are not included in the operating, and we will be revising this number as we go along, and it'll be presented to you at the end.
Okay. Ms. Willoughby, I failed to ask at the beginning, number one, I failed to recognize that you're joined by your finance director, Jenny Cartwright, so I want to make sure that the public understands that. And number two, if you don't mind, as we go through this, I want to invite, if you're good with it, if the commissioner has a question as we're going through this, I'd like to have them stop you and ask that question so that we don't have to wait through all of this and then try to come back to that.
Yeah, no problem. No problem at all.
So, commissioners, if you feel like you have something to ask on any particular item, please, please stop us and be acknowledged, so. And you don't have to be recognized by me in order to do so, okay? Because.
And I would like to add on these, the number of team members or FTEs, one thing we have implemented is a very strict reconciliation between year to year to make sure that we don't get, we have position control, that every position that's in the budget has been approved by this board at some time during the year. So, we reconcile as we go along, and I work with HR very closely on when we create positions in our financial system.
So, I did want to stop you right there, then. The team members that we have for '22, '23, these are budgeted items, budgeted individuals. That doesn't mean that every position in the county was filled the entire year. Is that a correct statement?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, there is, yes, there's a difference between people and positions. A position is like a chief financial officer budgeted, and in my case, I was here all year, but perhaps if there was a vacancy, then you would realize some salary savings between the budget and the actual personnel cost.
Right. So, we're looking at, in the proposed year, '22, '23, '24, we're looking at increasing the number of positions in our county by nine, according to this chart.
Terry Willoughby, that's correct. At this point, we will, Jenny has a presentation specifically that will walk you through how we got from the adopted budget last year to what we're proposing this year and any supplemental requests. And supplemental positions are not included in that.
Okay. And so, two of those members in the nine that we're proposing are the fact that we're moving emergency management into our structure versus the fire department. So, that would account for a couple of those positions. So, we're not growing, and that's the point I want to make to the public, is that we're not growing county, the county in a personnel situation to a great extent from one year to the next, so.
Terry Willoughby, that's correct, and we will walk you through the specific positions, and you'll remember, oh, yes, that happened. I believe that we created a administrative position in the county manager's office during the fiscal year for the indigent defense program that to, instead of paying the attorney consultant, attorney that was managing the program for all those administrative tasks, that position handles some of that, so there was cost savings. But again, that's a new position.
Thank you very much.
And emergency management was the bulk of it.
Appreciate it.
No problem. Fund accounting overview. So, a fund is a fiscal and accounting entity which has a self-balancing set of accounts, segregated for the purpose of carrying on specific activities or attaining certain objectives in accordance with specific regulations, restrictions, or limitations. So, for example, room tax. Room tax has certain things it can only be used for, so we don't co-mingle those monies with the general fund. We separate those into a separate fund so we can track and make sure that they're used as labor legislatively or approved by the board for those activities. The county currently accounts for its financial resources in over 100 separate funds in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP, and Governmental Accounting Standards Board Regulations, or GAAP, which we lovingly call GASB. There's a few different fund types. Governmental funds, accounting is based on current financial resources. This is also referred to as modified accrual. So, it's based on current resources. So, it's not, say you have a long-term debt, you're not budgeting the entire long-term debt balance in these governmental funds, it's only the annual portion that can be used. So, it's based, like, thinking of taxes, you're going to collect this revenue this year, and that's what your resources are, and that's how we budget for them. There are general funds, special revenue funds, which example would be room tax, capital project, like the RTC fund, and our debt service fund, we have one. So, again, revenues are those collected within the year or soon enough after to be used to pay the current expenditures. Proprietary funds, accounting is based full accrual, like you would find in a business, internal service and enterprise funds, reports on activities financed primarily by the activity that generates the fund, like water utility would be financed by water rates. Airport is by rents and leases and activities of the airport, and those are, again, separated, and we don't mingle, co-mingle those at all. On a full accrual basis, revenues are what is billed, when the service is performed, and expenditures are reported when incurred. So, in that example of a debt issuance, we would record the entire obligation in these funds at the time the debt was issued. Fiduciary fund, these are resources held by a government that belong to other individuals or entities other than the government. These are not included in the budget. For example, we collect property taxes for East Fork Fire District and East Fork Swimming District. It's not our money to spend, we just pass it through. That falls into these categories. And this is my bucket slide. So, think of funds as separate buckets. General fund, taxes, fees, and permits, police, operating services. Special revenues, funds are restricted for special purposes, hence the name special revenue. Grants, donations. Internal service funds, usually funded by internal charges. This is like our fleet services. It serves other departments, that's its business, so it's funded through charges to other departments within the county. Other funds, debt service and fiduciary funds, we only have one debt service fund for the county. Enterprise fund, fees are normally set to recover costs, that's part of the criteria for enterprise fund, that it should be self-supporting, supporting. So, examples are water, sewer, and airport.
So, Ms. Willoughby, when you talk about debt service and only identifying one, what is that one?
We only have one debt service fund, called the debt service fund.
Do we have multiple obligations there, or just one?
Most of the obligations are in the water fund, and so, because they're enterprise fund, they're recorded in, along with those types of funds.
I guess what I'm looking at is the remaining debt service we have on the community center.
Correct. We'll get to there.
Okay.
And I can bring that, I will bring that exact debt schedule back for tomorrow's meeting, and that's a good reminder, if there's questions we don't know the answer to, we will make a note and bring them back to you at the next day.
I've seen that process over the last couple of years, and you guys have been marvelous in doing that, and I appreciate that, so.
Yeah, no problem. I don't claim to remember everything, so it's better that I go look it up. The general fund, I feel this is the most important fund in the county. It accounts for all financial resources, not in another fund. It is a chief operating fund for Douglas County. It accounts for resources required to provide a variety of public services, general government, county manager, judicial, courts, district attorney, public safety, or sheriff, and now the new emergency management department, public works, and community development. The general fund is really the identifier of an organization's health. So, if your general fund is good, then that will usually be an indicator that most of the county is going to be good and healthy. So, different revenue sources in the general fund, property taxes, state consolidated taxes, and those are the different subcategories. Gaming revenue, licenses and permits, charges for services, fines and forfeitures, and miscellaneous revenue, like donations are an example of miscellaneous revenue. And we typically don't budget for those because you don't want to count on, a lot of those things fluctuate from year to year, so you don't want to count on them. Special revenue funds, the largest one and the actual second-largest in the county, is the room tax fund. Special revenue funds account for revenues that are legally restricted or committed to expenditures for a specific purpose. Room tax is a great example. It accounts for activities related to the chambers of commerce and visitors' authority and other specific Douglas County programs such as parks, recreation, and libraries. However, the library is now in a separate fund. Revenue sources, transient occupancy tax and the transient lodging license tax and charges for services for their programs like kids' club, youth, and adult sports are all held in the room tax fund. Sure?
So, I suppose my ignorance, but.
Do we get your, Ms. Hales, can we get you, we can all hear.
Hi. So, I know that we have 10% tax TOT at the lake, right? Or is that countywide?
It's 13 at the valley and 14 at the lake.
Okay. All right. And we keep those separate? Or do we?
They are all housed in the room tax fund. And Mr. Morgan will be actually providing a presentation on Thursday, but I would, I will make sure that he addresses how they track those.
Thanks.
A social services fund provides for general assistance and medical cares for indigents who reside in Douglas County. Revenue sources are the property taxes and grants. Road operating fund, which has been busy lately with all the road projects due to the snow, revenue sources are gas tax and a transfer from the general fund. The justice court administrative assessment fund accounts for the enhancement of court operations, and it's funded through, strictly through fines and forfeitures that the court that are segregated for those purposes. China Spring Youth Camp accounts for juvenile correction center operations and revenue sources, again, ad valorem property taxes, Medicaid, grants, and contributions from other counties. Emergency services, 911, the 911 and non-emergency communication services with our partners. And again, it's funded through user fees from those partner agencies as well as property taxes. The 911 surcharge is specifically set aside in a separate fund and can only be used for certain purposes, as outlined in the master plan. The senior services fund, this is, the Douglas area rapid transit or DART is funded out of here. Also, the meals and the Meals on Wheels that we are funded at the senior center, these are all funded through grants, program income, some of their programs do charge and they receive some funding, and transfers from the general fund, medical indigent and room tax funds. The PALS sales tax, PALS stands for parks, airport, library, and senior services. It was passed as a specific tax, and at the time the sales tax was passed, it was actually mandated to be in a separate fund. So, we created this a few years ago, and the money comes into here and then it's, the funding goes out based on a resolution approved by the board. The library fund accounts for all activities of Douglas County Library. This is a relatively new fund. And again, revenue sources, they have two PALS sales tax and the general fund transfer as well as some grants. And this is just other special revenue funds that have, so if there's anything that you wish me to speak about, I'd be happy to. These are some of the smaller items, but they all have a very specific revenue source that can only be used for certain things.
So, Ms. Willoughby, before you go on, I wanted to go back to that PALS sales tax. It says here Douglas County, optional sales tax. So, the tax rate in Douglas County, sales tax rate is 7.14, something of that nature? How much is actually the PALS tax of that? Is that what's, that's included in our sales tax number, right?
That is included, and we will get that information for you. I don't.
Okay.
At the top of my head, I can't remember. I know that the library gets 55%, but I don't remember how much the percentage is.
Thank you.
The debt service fund accounts for resources that are restricted, committed, or assigned to expenditures for the payment of principal and interest on long-term debt.
I'm sorry, I don't think we, I don't think we went through that other slide, the special revenue funds, the ones before, just, yeah. Did you want to go through that a little bit?
Sure.
I interrupted you when you, I interrupted you when you started that.
That's okay. These are some of the smaller ones, Nevada Cooperative Extension, UNR runs that program, and this is funds that they receive property tax, and all their activities are housed in this fund. Solid Waste Management Fund, Landscape Maintenance District, this is a special assessment district in Montero, and it's, the special assessment is here, and all the activities related to the landscape maintenance are expanded out of here. The State Motor Vehicle Accident Indigent Fund is no longer a special revenue, correct?
Correct.
And that's, we determined that it was actually a pass-through, that we collect the money and send it to the state, and I did not update the slide. Law Library, Library Gift Fund is all donation funded. Tahoe Transportation, Tahoe Douglas Transportation District, again, that's gas tax and a portion of the TOT funds that. Stormwater Management is solely funded by a transfer from the general fund. Oh, I thought you had a question.
We've sure worn them out, haven't we, over the last month and a half?
Yeah. And then, the flood litigation settlement fund, this was a one-time funding of a legal settlement, and it's all tracked, so we can segregate the monies related to the settlement here. And again, the PALS sales tax.
I have that sales tax percentage.
Sure.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, I have that information on the PALS sales tax percentage. So, it was the Douglas County Sales and Use Tax Act of 1999. It reads, "A majority of voters in Douglas County approved the..."
It reads, "A majority of voters in Douglas County approved the, at the 1998 primary election, an increase in the sales tax of one-quarter of 1% for the acquisition, development, operation, and maintenance of libraries, airports, facilities, and services for senior citizens, and for the operation and maintenance of parks and recreation programs and facilities."
So one-quarter of 1%. Okay, thank you. The number I was looking for.
Again, this is the debt service fund, and so if there is, like the community center bonds, which are housed in a governmental fund, the annual obligation is transferred from those operating funds into the debt service fund, and then all the debt service payments are made out of this fund. And with that, we're going to move into the proprietary funds, which are again full accrual, business-based. Enterprise funds are used to account for services provided to the public on a user-charge basis, similar to the operation of a commercial enterprise. There's the Regional Water Fund, the Douglas County Water Utility, the Sewer Utility Fund, and the Airport Enterprise Fund. And then the Internal Service Funds, which are like an enterprise fund, but their customer is other departments instead of private, instead of individuals. We have the Risk Management Fund, which is workers' comp, unemployment, and then dental insurance, which is our self-funded dental insurance, and the Motor Vehicle or Fleet Fund. Fiduciary Funds, these are again not our money, so used to account for assets held in trust for our government for the benefit of other entities, and these are also excluded from our financial statements. Douglas County School District, the General Improvement Districts, and the State of Nevada are types of fiduciary funds. So each district would have a separate fund number, so we're not commingling funds amongst each other. This is a.
So, and this question comes up every year, and it's regarding the GIDs, and, you know, how we treat the GIDs. Those funds all, from sale, from either sale taxes, road funds, or property taxes all come into our general fund, but then we hold those and, we don't hold those in, don't we have fiduciary responsibility to hold those and then transfer those funds to them?
Property tax.
Property taxes.
Not sales tax.
Not sales tax.
We don't collect sales taxes, come directly from the state. Property tax, we do hold them in trust, and then remit each month.
Okay. And we do charge a small fee for that process, is that correct? The administrative fee, or does that?
I would defer to the clerk treasurer on that.
Okay, the question is in regards to General Improvement Districts. We, we bring all those property taxes into the county in a trust manner, and then we transfer those funds back to the GID as appropriate.
That is correct.
Okay. Do we charge a fee for that process, or is that, we do that?
We do not. That is just part of what the treasurer of the county does.
Okay, okay. Sometimes there's a misunderstanding in the GIDs that we're withholding funds from them that should be going to them, and so that's why I wanted to make sure we got that on the record, and so the public can hear that process. Is that, just because it's coming to us doesn't mean we're withholding their funds. So, okay, thank you.
And Terry Willoughby, for the record, again, the districts are legally separate entities, so they are not part of our budget, they're not part of our financials. It's not our money, so it's theirs, and it's totally separate.
I'm just saying, I get almost a daily question from one GID or another, you know? Why aren't you doing this? Why aren't you doing that? And very important that we articulate on the record, they are separate entities, so.
This is a, the next graph is a breakdown of the total county revenue sources, and this is for last year's adopted budget. You can see that taxes are 46% of the revenue, so it is a very stable revenue source. The next would be intergovernmental revenues, which is things that are, come through the state, like consolidated tax, we don't collect it. The state collects and remits to us, so that is considered an intergovernmental revenue, as well as grants. And charges for services are things like community services, offering programs, anything that we're doing for an individual where they have a choice to pay for it. This is tax revenue specific. So on this slide, you can see 46% is taxes, and this is a breakdown of that 46%. And you can see 58% of the tax revenue is property taxes, which is again capped, but it's a very stable revenue source. Room tax, it would be next at 34%, and that is a little more volatile because you are dependent on tourism and the economy. This next slide does show the growth in assessed property values in thousands. You can see we go from 2017, 2018. This is the last year available, '22, '23, and so we are growing. The largest growth is, largest portion is residential. The next would be commercial industrial. These are the property tax rates budgeted, they're actually the same this year. We have not changed the tax rates for '23, '24. And this shows the tax growth in tax revenues from 2014 through 2022, which is our last full audited financial statement. And you see that we are doing quite a bit of growth. Fiscal year '21, as noted, does include PALS sales tax. It had been categorized as an intergovernmental revenue, but it really is a tax assessed by the county. We also have the consolidated tax revenues. This is the historical data. You can, as you may recall, the county gave up its guaranteed status for fiscal year '23, '24. So we are now relying on our actual collections. And again, you can see the growth, and I don't have an actual figure, but we expect to collect what, these are based on the state's estimates from Department of Taxation.
Is this, is this the, is this the chart that helps us determine, or helped us determine to not be a receiving county? Is it?
Yes, well, at that end, there's a rule, taxation has a rule, where if your collections go over a certain point, then you give up your guaranteed status. And Line County and Douglas County both felt we would be back on the same decision point again in a year. So that was part of this analysis, as well as making projections going forward. Consolidated tax was formulated in 1997 to combine and allegedly simplify the distribution of six different tax types into one distribution. Each tax type has its own distribution rules and formulas. They are outlined in NRS 360, if anyone wanted to look that up. There's cigarette tax, liquor tax, government services tax, real property transfer tax, basic city-county relief tax, and supplemental city-county relief tax. Now, the guaranteed status only applied to the last portion of that, which was the SCCRT.
When you, until fiscal year 2023, does that mean that we're just going into that process, or it's been for the '22, '23 budget?
'22, '23.
'22, '23 budget, thank you.
Cigarette tax, one-half cent per cigarette, or 10 cents per tax, 10 cents per pack of 20, collected statewide and distributed per population. Liquor tax is 50 cents per gallon of liquor containing over 22% alcohol. These are right from NRS, I did not make these up. Collected statewide and distributed again per, based on population. The government services tax is collected by the DMV, based on the value of a motor vehicle at the time of registration, distributed to the county of origin. Real property transfer tax is 55 cents per $500 value on real property transfers within each county, and then distributed to the county of origin.
Okay. I wanted to go back to that, the GST collected by DMV. So there's, there's always concerns that they're going to Carson City or to Lion County in Yarrington to pay their registration fees, and so it's important for our residents to know that those funds come back to us.
Right, county of origin. BCCRT, one-half percent of the statewide sales and/use tax rate, distributed to the county where the sale is made. Out-of-state sales are distributed on the basis of population. SCCRT, 1.75% of the statewide sales and use tax rate is distributed to county based on statute. Eight of Nevada, Nevada counties receive a guaranteed allocation, or did. The remaining counties receive a distribution in proportion to their in-state tax, in-state collections after the guaranteed counties receive their allocation. So this number would be slightly different, it's now only six guaranteed counties. And this is the breakdown based on a dollar of revenue. So 63.1, 65.13% of the majority of the seat tax portion is based on that SCCRT, which was why it was so important when we made that decision to go to drop the guaranteed status. It really increased the revenue probably about $1 million per year, close to it. The next largest revenue is room tax revenues, and you can see the growth since 2018 to our budgeted for 2024. And here we have, so, so room tax collected in East Fork for every dollar collected, the distribution is, as shown, with 54 cents going to the room tax fund, 3 cents goes to the State of Nevada, and the balance goes to the Carson Valley Visitors Authority. On the right-hand side, you can see for every dollar collected, the distribution is room tax fund. The light blue is Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority, the Lake Visitors Authority, and the State of Nevada. This is the countywide breakdown of all expenditures. You can see salaries and employee benefits are 43.9%. The next largest category would be 26%. Countywide room tax pass-through payments account for 11.1%. So our different expenditure, we use expenditure categories to classify and group things together. Personnel is salaries and employee benefits. Services and supplies are also considered an operating cost. Services provided and goods consumed, professional services, utilities, food used for services like the jail, senior services, insurance, are all examples of services and supplies. The capital category includes capital outlay for long-term capital projects and capital equipment, which would be one-time purchases for vehicles and equipment. This is a historical graph that shows the revenues in the green and expenditures in the blue from fiscal year 2617 through our adopted budget for fiscal year '22, '23. And fiscal year 2021 was kind of an anomaly. We received a lot of CARES Act money, so that has been extracted to normalize the graph. There's no questions, I'll move on to fund balance. So fund balance, we talk a lot about fund balance, and it's the difference between all the revenue the fund has received and all the expenditures the fund has made since the fund was created. It's like equity in a private business. It is a, represents a one-time resource that is available at the time the budget is adopted. We have adopted a budget augmentation policy that restricts the use of fund balance to, to various reasons, and basically just one-time things. We try and keep everything in the annual budget process, so you're not hearing multiple budget items throughout the year, as much as possible. NRS 354 6.660, ending fund balance of not more than 25% of expenditures is not subject to employee negotiations and must not be considered in determining the financial ability of a government to pay compensation or benefits.
I have a question.
Yeah.
On that. Since salaries make up so much of the expense, is it, is it, is it ever a situation where the ending fund balance could be difficult to use? And it seems to me like you would want to keep ending fund balances pretty low because you don't want to just carry over a bunch of money. Do you get my question?
Yeah. We'll talk a little bit more during the general fund overview. I also, there's a copy of the general fund, fund balance policy and budget policy that, so our policy is particularly for the general fund that operating expenditures must be covered by operating revenues. And the operating expenditures also include the transfers out to other funds. So once we're balanced, if there is an excess, there are specific guidelines in that policy for how that fund balance should be used. Because you don't want to spend, it's like paying your operating, your household bills out of your savings account. Eventually, your savings account would be gone. So we want to make sure that we're in balanced. And there's a little difference between NRS and my definition of a balanced budget. Talk about that. There are different types of fund balance, and you'll see this particularly in our financial statements. Restricted, these are things we really can't spend because there are external restrictions on fund balance, such as perhaps you would issue debt, and the debt covenants would have specific requirements. We would not be able to spend that on salaries, so we would set it aside as restricted. Some of the donations we receive also have restrictions where someone has donated something and said it can only be used for this. So we, again, pull that money out of the available fund balance. Committed is similar, but it's not an external legal restriction. It's a restriction that the Board of County Commissioners has formally taken action to say that that should be restricted. So there has to be a formal resolution. And then assigned are amounts constrained by the government's intent, but that are neither restricted or committed. Authority can be delegated to an official by the board. These would be things like, perhaps there's not a clear legal guideline on typically donations, for example, or another good example. Somebody may have donated money, but there's not a specific legal restriction on it. But we still want to, don't want to spend it on operating because there may be some guidelines. So we would assign that fund balance. And then unassigned is any fund balance in the general fund that is not restricted, committed, or assigned. And this is what we consider available for budgeting in the general fund. When I talk about available fund balance, it's this unassigned. So in, on July 1st, 2019, the Board of County Commissioners did adopt Policy 300.21, which is the general fund balance and budget policy. You have a copy on the dais. It mandates that the county will maintain a minimum level of an unassigned, which is the available again, fund balance in the general fund of two months of regular operating expenditures, including transfers out. It is the intent that the county would limit the use of fund balance to address unanticipated, non-recurring needs. And this probably kind of speaks to your question, Commissioner Hales. If unassigned. If unassigned fund balance exceeds the minimum balance requirements, the excess may be used in the following ways, at the direction of the Board of County Commissioners. First priority would be funding accrued liabilities such as pension, debt service, or post-employment benefits. Budgeted to fund contributions for the capitals, to the county's capital improvement plan for, to make a one-time contribution to a critical capital project. One-time expenditures that do not increase future operating costs. So for example, if you wanted to build a park, that would, you could fund the park, but then we have to think about the impact of how we would staff the park, mow the park, those types of things. And then startup expenditures for new programs are also an allowable use of fund balance.
So Ms. Willoughby, we said that the minimum level of unassigned fund balances in general fund of two months of regular, where exactly are we today?
We are above that, and I will get to that in the general fund overview. That same policy also defines what a balanced budget means. And you do have an, there is an item that was uploaded and as well is available for you at your DIES about maintaining a structural balanced budget. And it talks about the difference between a legislatively balanced budget and what a true balanced budget is. So the same policy defines a balanced budget as meaning operating revenues will fully cover operating expenditures, including transfers out. And then again, ending fund balance must meet the minimum balance requirements. These are the hallmarks of a good, healthy general fund.
So is that just general fund or all, all funds?
We do, and there are funds that have, that are able to use fund balance, like a capital project fund would collect money, kind of saving it up for, in its fund balance for a large capital project. That's a little different than something like the general fund or the special revenue funds. I would say for the general fund and special revenue funds, there, we have a, we do have a different, different policy for the room tax fund, which allows for some use of fund balance. But it's always good to look and make sure that your operating revenues are not being, that your operating expenditures are not more than your operating revenues. Enterprise funds are similar where they are, like they will, they will build up in their reserves some funding and then use it for one big project. And that's a specific plan of funding it. Contingencies are appropriated in each operating funds, major operating funds budget to provide for non-recurring, unanticipated expenditures to be readily available for the use in emergencies. We rarely use our contingency, however, we did, I believe, win indigent defense for the first year of that. There is a limit on the maximum amount that may be appropriated for such a contingency account. The limit is 3% exclusive of any amounts transferred to any other funds. Therefore, to meet emergency conditions, the budget shall provide for an appropriated contingency of 1.5 to 3% of estimated annual operating expenditures. The general fund and all special revenue fund types shall maintain a contingency. And this, there's very strict requirements on using that contingency. We do, it does require board approval to use, to transfer from the contingency to this specific expenditure. Budget transfers and augments, it's budget augmentation, I'm sure you've already heard this a lot this year. It's a procedure for increasing appropriations of a fund or the budget of a fund with the intent of using previously unbudgeted resources of the fund for carrying out the increased appropriations. So typically, for most governmental funds, we have to have either new revenue or greater than anticipated revenue. Say the building permits came in a million dollars higher than you budgeted, then you could spend, you could augment your budget to spend that million dollars in that year. It also allows for the use of greater than anticipated fund balance, which we usually do after the audit. So an augment is increasing a budget. A transfer is just transferring between two items within the same fund. So and augments do require new resources, either greater than anticipated fund balance or greater than anticipated revenue. So I always think of like transfers of, you needed more money to buy pens rather than pencils, and so you're moving the light item. It's an easier way to think about it for me. We do have a policy. It was adopted January of 2021. Augments from adjusted opening fund balance, which is the difference between what we thought the fund balance was going to be and the actual audited ending fund balance of the prior year. So, and it can only be used for outstanding purchase order or contract encumbrances because those are still commitment, they're commitments of the county. Ongoing previously approved capital projects and budgets for restricted accounts. Augments, under this policy, augments from adjusted opening fund balance may not be used for new capital projects or additions to existing capital projects or increases to operating expenditures. Again, we don't want to use our fund balance or our savings account for operating expenditures. And we are trying to limit the capital projects to one time a year in the budget process. We have had some, there's some extenuating circumstances where projects now are coming in with, over what they were projected, and so that's just an exception to the policy. But for the most part, we want the board to hear capital projects one time a year, approve a plan, and move forward with that in the budget. If there's fund balance available, but there's no budgetary items that meet the above criteria, it would roll into fund balance and be available during the next budget cycle. For example, rather than augmenting a project, like bringing a new project in January when they had greater than anticipated fund balance, we would just ask them to wait until a few months, a couple of months, and bring that new project as part of the capital improvement We have two new funds that were just approved. The extraordinary maintenance fund, which is outlined in NRS 3546105, and money in the fund may be used for the extraordinary maintenance, repair, or improvement of capital projects or facilities that replace capital projects of the entity. Extraordinary maintenance means all expenses ordinarily incurred not more than once every five years to maintain a local government facility or capital project in a fit operating condition. Many of our, and this is, will be important because many of our facilities, like this building, Mendenham, are aging, and so we'll be using this fund to fund some of those, those maintenance projects. The other new fund is the economic stabilization fund, and this will be particularly timely. It's outlined in three, NRS 354.6115. It must be used only for, the first example is if the total actual revenue of the local government falls short of the total anticipated revenue in the general fund for the fiscal year in which the local government uses all that money, uses that money, or to pay expenses incurred by the local government to mitigate the effects of an emergency or a natural disaster. So particularly with these last storm events where we may be seeking FEMA reimbursement and there may be a local match required, this fund can be used for that local match without harming any of the other operating funds.
Ms. Willoughby, I wanted to go back to that, that page previous to this. Extraordinary maintenance means all expenses ordinarily incurred not more than once every five years. So this will be structural things that might occur to our buildings, not necessarily the replacement of carpet, lights, and the other.
It, it could.
Oh, it could.
Could be, because you typically don't replace your carpeting more than once every five years. It could also, when the new courthouse project is complete and the existing JLEC building may have some renovations, this fund could be used for that.
Okay. Good information.
So we are required in Nevada law, and it's also a best practice to have a five-year capital improvement program. You will not be hearing that as part of these budget hearings, but you will be seeing it before we go to have the final budget. So I expect sometime in April, we'll have that. It's a planning and budgeting tool. It identifies needed projects and improvements with or without funding. So we do ask that departments submit everything they can, that they might possibly want to do so that the board has a good idea of what things are out there, whether, and what types of funding we may be looking for. This is really helpful as we have a grants administrator now in our office, and she can always be on the lookout for grant opportunities if she knows that certain projects exist. And it also allows the board to prioritize and plan for future funding. So capital improvements are large-scale endeavors in cost, size, and benefit to the community. Long-term investment of funds and time, new construction of facilities and infrastructure like roads, sewer, water facilities, rehabilitation, reconstruction, or renovation that extend the life of an asset, and acquisition of property or equipment. The capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2023, 24 again, will be presented at a separate Little definition of what we consider capital assets. Capital assets are assets acquired for use in operations with a useful life of more than one year. Land and improvements, building and infrastructure and improvements, 50,000 or more. Vehicles, machinery, and equipment, $10,000 or more. And assets purchased with federal funds, that's under federal guidance, it would be 5,000 or more. Debt management, the county utilizes both short and long-term debt in managing the financial county. The county's short-term obligations consist of capital lease and notes payable. For example, like copier leases are now considered capital leases. But, long-term debt exists of tax exempt debt primarily issued to fund long-term capital improvement projects and to refund earlier debt issuance for similar projects. You may recall, probably within the last two years, we did refund some debt for the water fund. We also refunded some of the community center bonds to create savings because when the interest rates were lower. Types of debt, general obligation bonds are repaid by property taxes, full faith and credit of the county if pledged. General obligation revenue bonds, findings must be paid that, must be made that the pledged revenue is going to be sufficient to pay the debt service. Example of this would be typically water bonds or water revolving loan because they want to make sure that, if we're using that as a source, then we have to make sure that it is sufficient to pay back the debt. Revenue bond, only pledged revenues are secured for payment, and a reserve fund is usually required. Medium-term financing, some of the community center debt is medium-term. All legally available funds of the issue are pledged for repayment and usually, usually used for general governmental projects with no specific revenue resources. And capital leases would be like something that you're leasing and you're going, you're going to take possession after that lease is over, take ownership of the asset. Little bit about what a budget is. A budget is a plan of expenditure that allocates resources according to the priorities of the community as communicated through the board. Projects revenue and expenditures for the next fiscal year, not only concerned with immediate needs, but also long-term forecasting. And one of my goals for the next, next two years is to bring back a 10-year financial plan for the general fund and room tax fund. Our specific budget process is, starts with a target. Departments have provided this target for fiscal year 23, 24. The target was fiscal year 21, 22, actual expenses with a 5% escalation allowance allowed for services and supplies based on inflation. So we start with real numbers, and we, that's where we start and we build from there. So the goal is always, in this base budget or tentative budget, is to provide the same service level in fiscal year 23, 24 that was actually provided in our target year, but it may be costing more money to provide the same program or level of service. Adjustments can be made within the base budget for inflation, or inflationary or contrast, contract escalators. When I look at the base budget and when I'm determining whether something is supplemental or not, I look at whether the department had control over that cost. If they have a contract that was executed and has a three-year escalator, you have to budget for that increased cost, and nobody's going to change that. So we, we roll those costs into the base budget. But if it's a new program, then they can control that, and the board should have decision on whether they undertake that new program. New programs or services will be supplemental requests, and you'll be hearing those, some of those today for the general fund. Supplemental requests were reviewed internally, and some minor requests were added to the base based on, for example, if it was an existing position and they wanted to move the existing position from a .48 of a person FTE to a 1.0 FTE, we calculated the difference. They're not adding a person or a position, they're just making a decision to that they need a full-time person. Those types of things were rolled into base. Typically, a lot of times we'll have new legislation. Last year, we had the 24-hour hearings that caused additional costs. And those did cost some, there were some increases that were requested this year that were specifically identified as being related to those types of legislation. We can't really, no, the departments don't have control over that. We have to do it, so we rolled those types of things into the base budget. So I think of, can the department head, can the director control this cost or not? And that's what makes the determination for going into base.
So, as I understand it, there's a couple of bills before the state legislature right now, and pretty much involving this, this process. I believe NACO and other counties have indicated a, or maybe it was the California League of Cities, a unfunded mandate study that hopefully will pass. Also, I just read today, a bill that's been introduced will require the election services in nine different languages. So, once again, that, we're going to need to take a look at how that becomes an unfunded mandate and the costs involved in doing that, Ms. Bergens.
Amy Bergens, Clark Treasurer for the record. We are fully aware of that bill and have had discussions with the chair and other legislators about it and have some friendly amendments that they are willing to listen to. So we're on the right track with that one.
Okay. Because those are new programs or services that.
Terry Willoughby for the record. But right now, it's not certain. So until they become legislation, we, we can't count on it, so.
As, as, I suppose as these things come forward, and then we recognize the budgetary implications of those bills, then that would require the request for supplemental funds as we get into the next fiscal year, should those, those types of bills pass. Is that, is that the correct process that we go through in order to meet that demand?
Terry Willoughby for the record, yes. And sometimes it takes, like you wouldn't see some of those requests until the next fiscal year. For the additional hearings that were legislated during the last session, we saw supplemental requests this fiscal year because it takes a while to realize how much it costs and what services are needed to provide, to be compliant with the legislation.
All right, that brings up another question. Do we do, I know for some bills, we do fiscal estimation. Is that for every bill that could cost?
I see every bill draft, and I look at every bill draft that comes through. Some are delegated, if they're election-related or property tax, they're delegated to Ms. Bergens. The courts have a few that have been delegated to them. But I, we, we provide, as a team, a fiscal note on every bill draft, whether it's none, or something. And I usually reach out to department heads, because I'm always afraid I will think something has no impact, and that, I don't know their operations, so I make sure that they're aware.
For the record, Patrick Kates, I just wanted to add to that, you know, the fiscal note process. So, any bill that the Legislative Council Bureau deems to have a potential impact on local government, they'll ask for a fiscal note. Sometimes there's bills that do have an impact that they don't ask, and we have to submit an unsolicited fiscal note. But this all happens very quickly, with hundreds of bills. So it's possible we could miss doing a fiscal note, or what we quickly thought of would be the impact isn't quite what it is when the bill, and a lot of times, a bill may get amended after that fiscal note is done. So the actual cost of a bill could, like what Ms. Willoughby said, we may not really determine that until we're a year in.
So, and then, my immediate thoughts were there on, there had to be, when the legislature two years ago passed the bill to require a hearing within 48 hours of a, okay, that had some financial impact on our court systems, right? Is, Mr. Jackson, is that right? Yeah, I see you shaking your head, and I, and I don't mind you speaking, if you have a, have a note on that. I mean, those are, once again, those are unfunded mandates that, that really have a financial fiscal impact on our budgets, because we budget the, the courts, and if, and if they have additional expenses, then that, that's going to fall back on a general fund. So, Mr. Jackson, you want to add?
Thank you. For the record, Mark Jackson, Douglas County District Attorney. AB 424 is the bill from the 2021 session that required pre-trial bail hearings within 48 hours. So, last budget cycle, I had brought forward to the board some of the impacts with respect to, to my office. We are having bail hearings every weekend, so it does involve the courts, and involves my office, and involves the sheriff's office. It can involve, if there's other conditions associated with it, it can involve also the Department of Alternative Sentencing. So unfortunately, we have suffered some, some fiscal impacts associated with that. There are, I think currently, four bills that are up at the legislature right now, with some potential amendments related to AB 424. There is one bill that hasn't, not had any movement so far, and it's a bill that was sponsored by Assemblyman P.K. O'Neill. This is the one that the sheriffs and chiefs and the District Attorneys Association, as well as the Courts of Limited Jurisdiction, fully supports. And what it would do is, it would amend AB 424 to insert language that would exclude weekends and holidays. And therefore, we would no longer have to have these weekend bail hearings. But it, my best guess is that that bill will not be heard, will not even get a hearing. So we're going to still be dealing with these weekend bail hearings.
So, thank you, Mr. Jackson. That was very important information. So when we're building our budgets, Ms. Willoughby, in that regard, taking those, are we building the costs that we've incurred? Are we trying to build that into our, our new budget, so that we're not coming back for supplementals to cover that later on?
Teri Willoughby for the record, one of the things I saw, so, Mr. Jackson is correct. In the last budget, we did build in some anticipated costs and positions to deal with that. However, the courts had ancillary costs, like court reporting services, increased. So they had submitted a supplemental. I didn't feel that that rose to a level of supplemental, because it's due to legislation. It was moved into base.
Okay, thank you. I, I know I've gotten a little off track here, but I just, we need to pay attention to that one, particularly as, as we go forward. So, thank you.
So how we come up with the budget assumptions, utilize State Department of Taxation estimates for property and consolidated taxes. I also do perform a lot of trend analysis. Jenny and her staff are, do most of this. Historical data combined with known events. Typically, we, like, for an example, would be the VHR room tax revenue. It's been growing, 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 but there's a lot of moving parts with the, with the proposed ordinance, so, which may restrict the growth of that revenue. So we've been budgeting it flat. We also work with departments on any potential effects to revenue. What do they know is going to happen? I know for, we control revenue, they've experienced increases in their chemical costs, which drive up their revenues, because it's basically, they're charging the customer. So we, we work with all the other departments as well.
So, in VHR, room tax is, is a critical number, because we, oh, that's the room tax, not the, not the actual fees that we charge for, for those permitting processes.
Correct, that's just the room tax. We segregate the room tax.
Okay. So, obviously, in the VHR room tax, but this goes back to my question, is that we anticipate, you know, well, we, we passed a ordinance that said we would allow up to 600 vacation home rentals. So that would indicate a certain room tax that we would collect from that. But if we're not at that number, then our revenues are going to be short on that.
Well, we would look at what the actual revenue, we, we would know that there's not 600 yet. So you would, if we expect to get to 600, and this is something we would talk to the community development department, do you expect to get to that level or not? What do you, based on current trends, what do you think that the revenue would be?
I guess what I'm saying is, it's a good thing we are budgeting at a flat, right? So, thank you.
For personnel, we do utilize position budgeting, which consists of position control. This is all in our financial system. So current approved positions, occupied positions, so if there's a person in that position, we use the actual compensation and benefit data it carries over to the budget system. For vacant position, we use approved pay range data and weighted average cost of benefits. We, appropriate funding was included in this budget for the anticipated labor, anticipated settlement of the labor contract agreements, assumptions for other employees based on existing contracts, and the MOU for non-represented employees. Little note that the Nevada PERS contribution rate has changed, because it's changed every biennium. For police, it went up 6% to 50%. So that means, this is the county's employer contribution. And for other employees, general employees, went up 3.75% since the last rate, to 33.5%. And that's based on salary, so it's 50%. The contribution is 50% of the salary. For services and supplies, again, we use fiscal year 21-22 actuals, plus the 5% escalator. If there's an increase in cost that can't be controlled by the department, contract escalator, like increase in the price of gasoline, that, those types of increases are included in the base budget. Again, if the increase is a new program or a purchase within the control of the department, it's typically deemed a supplemental request. And that concludes this presentation. Any further questions?
Messers, any additional questions? Commissioner Turkianian, any questions?
No, I don't. It was, it was a very good presentation, as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Noah's head, Mr. Rice?
Just one question. If, if our escalator is at 5%, and the cost of living is at 6.5%, 7%, how do we adjust for that?
So, inflation doesn't hit, we've determined that inflation does not hit every category within the services and supplies. Some of them are professional services, and they don't always go up, or they may be contracted at a certain level. So we do, we start with 5%, and we will, you know, keep reviewing that during the year to make sure that it's not going up. And we don't, I, hopefully, inflation's going to level off some.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's, looks like a little bit quarter after, I don't have a watch in front of me. But Commissioner Noah's head, what, what does your computer say what time it is? 11:16. Can we take a break until 11:30? Would that be good? Okay, let's take a break until 11:30, come back and tackle the next item. Thank you. Commissioner Turkianian, I don't know if you're still online.
Did somebody ask for me?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Turkianian?
Yeah, yes.
We've observed that it's at 11:30, and the next presentation's probably going to take a couple of hours. So rather than break in the middle of that, we're going to just go ahead and take a lunch break at 11:30 our time, which is in five minutes, and return at 12:30. I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're back in session. We have, we have acknowledged that the next presentation is going to take several hours. And so we've decided to go ahead and take a lunch break at this time and return at 12:30 to commence with item number three on the agenda. So with that, the meeting is back in recess for an hour. Thank you.
Okay, it is now 12:30, so we'll go back into session. We have, is Commissioner Tarkanian back online with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you very much, okay. And Commissioner Hales has not returned yet, but we're gonna, why don't we reach out to her and see if she's close? Who could do that? Maybe I'll call her, so. Or Patrick, could you possibly check and see if... Okay, we're gonna give Commissioner Hales a few more minutes to return. Okay, all five commissioners are back in session. So at this time, we'll go into item number three for presentation only. Presentation of an overview of the Douglas County General Fund fiscal year 2023-24 tentative budget presented by Chief Financial Officer Terry Willoughby and joined by our Finance Director Jenny Cartwright. Ms. Willoughby.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, for those following along online, we are on the supplemental agenda packet for March 28th on page 516.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, a couple questions came up right before we broke for lunch that I wanted to provide the answers to for the public. There was a question about whether the towns were charged for the property tax that they, like the pass-through payments. They are actually not legally separate entities, and so they are part of the county. We're all in one happy bank account, and so they get their property tax directly. They are part of the county. And also, the town budgets are not heard at the tentative level by the board. They are heard by their own respective boards, and then you'll hear those budgets as part of the final because you do have to approve those budgets. There was also a question on the capital improvement plan, whether it included utility projects. And although we don't build our own utility lines and everything, we do major renovation projects like Cave Rock, although, so every county capital improvement or renovation project is included in that capital improvement plan. With that, I will...
So the only reason I brought that up previously was because, once again, we get questions from the GIDs that, you know, there's a misperception there that the county, so those funds come into the county and we keep those funds, or we don't distribute the 100% of those funds back to them for their use. And so that's why I asked the question, to ensure that that was on the record, that we were just the pass-through organization through to the GIDs.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make the distinction because that question came up about the towns. So with that, I will move into the general fund overview. So again, there can only be one general fund. It's all financial resources required to fund a variety of public services not accounted for in other funds, but not limited to publica safety, general government, judicial services, and community development. Why is general fund financial stability so important? And I know everyone's probably heard this before from me, but governments should maintain adequate levels of fund balance to mitigate future risk, revenue shortfalls, COVID pandemics, unanticipated expenditures, and to ensure stable tax rates. Adequate levels are unique to each government based on risk, natural disasters, volatile revenue sources. And we are at risk in this county for some of those natural disasters and the effect they could have on the general fund. Important to not only be balanced per NRS and Nevada Administrative Code requirements, but also be financially sustainable. Sustainable equals operating revenues cover operating expenditures, including transfers out to other funds, without the use of one-time resources. And to that end, we've already talked about the fund balance policy, so I'm not going to go into that again, but that particularly applies to that. So here you can see, this is the general fund revenues. You can see the growth in property taxes, state consolidated taxes, charges for services, a little dip, development permits. These include building permits, engineering fees, and planning, still increasing. Franchise fees, as the number of businesses in the county and residents increase, these fees will increase. Other intergovernmental is fairly stable. Gaming licenses fluctuate from year to year. Other fines and forfeitures, again, fluctuate from year to year. And some of these, we do not budget for because they are restricted. Miscellaneous revenue, as I spoke before, we, most of this, we don't, the primary component of this miscellaneous revenue is not budgeted for. It's donations and things like that. The sheriff gets a lot of donations, but we, they augment their budget each time they get a group of donations. So we don't count on that money. And VHR permits and fines, other licenses and permits, and investment income, and transfers in. General fund revenue, you can see fiscal year, the blue is fiscal year 22 actual revenues. The orange is 23 adopted budget, and the gray would be the proposed budget for next fiscal year. So we are seeing growth in property taxes and state consolidated taxes, which are the primary components of the general fund.
I, a question on that. Maybe this is a good place to ask the question. I know that there is talk amongst experts of a potential recession, and I'm wondering if you've, how do you analyze that? How do you think about that? And how does that impact a proposed budget?
Yeah, Terry Willoughby, for the record, for the most part, the majority of our revenue is property taxes in the general fund. We wouldn't see necessarily an impact for recession to that. We're also a little recession-proof because we have a large retiree population, that they're not going to lose a job and lose their revenue. They still have pensions or other investment income. So I am reviewing it, and of course, we would make any adjustments mid-year. I do publish, try and publish quarterly financial reports to the board that would give you an update as we go through the year. See, 49% of the general fund revenue is property taxes, and next, the next largest portion is state consolidated tax. So more than 50% is, this is more volatile than this, but it is tax revenue. Expenses by function, general government, fiscal year 21, actual expenditures, these are, this is where we received the CARES Act money, and it was applied against, as a rebate to public safety, which is why you see this so low, and then it increases. But expenditures are relatively stable, with the exception of fiscal year 21. We put about probably quite, about $5 million back into the general fund as a reimbursement for COVID expenses.
Looking at, oh, looking at this chart here, under public safety, that includes our sheriff's department, I take it?
That's primarily the sheriff's department, correct.
Primarily, sure. So...
And the CARES Act in fiscal year 21 was deemed, public safety expenditures were deemed to be automatically, public safe, any public safety expenditure was deemed to be eligible for CARES Act reimbursement.
Okay. The, I'm sorry, the proposed tentative budget, the proposed tentative budget for public safety, does that include funds for our anticipated sheriff's labor agreement settlement?
Yeah, Terry Willoughby, for the record, we have budgeted what we expected for the proposed settlement. And we'll talk about that, how it's, when we get to the end. Are there any questions here? Again, you can see the blue, fiscal year 21 expenditures, that's the outlier. Fiscal year 22, actual, public safety, this is community development, transfers out.
I'm sorry, Ms. Willoughby, I need to go back to the chart because their debt service was only 22 actual expenditures, but there's no debt service in 23 or 24.
Yeah, Terry Willoughby, for the record, we had a new accounting implementation at the end of fiscal year 22, which required us to record capital leases as debt service. So like the copiers and other capital computer equipment that are leased, they are required to be recorded on our financial statements as long-term debt, and so that's the adjustment. I'm assuming that that will be included in the final budget, some estimate.
So I know that we still have a note on the, I'm going back to the community center, we still have a note on that. Where would that be in this process here, then?
Sorry, what?
Would that be under capital, then? The debt service that we have on our community center, I don't believe it.
That's not in the general fund.
That's in the general fund.
Not in the general fund.
Not in the general, not in the general fund. So it doesn't include any of these areas. Okay, okay, that's, I got my head wrapped around that now.
And the debt service that you're seeing, this $68,000, that's not really a cash entry, like we paid cash. It's just an accounting adjustment at that time. This shows the year over, the fiscal year 21, 22, and actual expenditures, and fiscal year 23 adopted budget, and 24 proposed tentative for the major components of the general fund. So general government would be county manager, finance, those types of things, administrative-type departments. Judicial, of course, is the courts and the district attorney, and indigent defense. So you can see the growth there. Public safety is primarily the sheriff, as well as the emergency manager. And community development is community. That's the VHRs, that's building, planning, and engineering. So this chart shows the fiscal year 2024 general fund budget by function and percentage. You can see the gray is public safety, so that's primarily the biggest, largest component of the general fund. And that's consistent with the county's vision that we value our public safety employees. 24% would be the judicial function, and 22% would be the general government. This shows the same expenditures by type. So salaries and wages are 46% of the general fund, with 25% employee benefits, 22% services and supplies, and a small portion of capital. And see, this is the change in fund balance. This was fiscal, so these four years are actual audited numbers. This was the CARES Act reimbursement year, $8 million, $820. And then the fiscal year 21, 22, we had a $366,000 surplus. The budget for, adopted budget for this current fiscal year that we're in, projected $177. And right now, we, as of today, the tentative budget, without any supplemental requests, is a $2.1 million surplus. So this is our current resources, and this is the uses. You can see it's increased here, and then we've leveled off, and it really should be balanced. You don't want to be collecting taxes for things that we're not spending money on, so we are projecting a balanced budget. To talk to the available fund balance, this is the chart of the available fund balance, audited for 1718 through fiscal year 21. You can see how low we actually were in 1718, when our reserve target of 60 days was really $7 million. We were short there. And now we have more than, we have currently projecting 151 days. And that's without any supplemental requests. So we do have some room to fund the supplemental requests. This is the presentation of transfers out to other funds. Last year, there was a one-time transfer out to the county construction fund of $5.3 million because of, again, the funding was available. And so that was a one-time planned use of fund balance. As I talked about before, Stormwater Fund is completely funded by general fund transfer. As I talked about before, Stormwater Fund is completely funded by general fund transfer. And there's also a five-thousand-dollar transfer to Stormwater Fund for Warrior Way, there's an agreement that they, that the general fund funds. We transfer to the nine-one-one emergency service fund for the sheriff's share of the dispatch fees. In fiscal year 22, 23, and this was the final budget versus tentative, so there were some new vehicle purchases approved, and the sixty thousand reflects the general fund's portion of those vehicles. Radio user fees, forty thousand dollars for the court cameras at Tahoe Jail and the JALEC building, the new courthouse project. The library is funded solely by their share of the PAL's sales tax revenue, as well as the general fund transfer. So, we are projecting a decrease in that transfer from the general fund. So, the intent would be as their PAL's, PAL's sales tax increases, then the support from the general fund would We are, the room tax employees do provide snow removal and inspections for ice accumulation and other snow-related services for non-room tax-funded facilities. So, these are paid out of the general fund, and that amount has remained constant. And there are also, the next line item, the twenty-eight thousand, represents general fund employees who are housed in the community center or at other room tax facilities. So, the general fund reimburses the room tax fund for those costs. Last year, there was eighteen thousand nine-hundred-and-forty to China Spring, one-time funding. And we, the general fund also provides funding to the senior services fund for support, as well as funds for their grant match for any grants that they receive. And that is reviewed annually, and if they don't need that money for, say they don't have the need for as much because of, they get less grants, or sometimes the grant match is waived, then that money kind of does come back to the general fund during the year.
That sort of leads me to a question, which is, if next year's budget for each department is based on last year's expenses, does that lead in some instances to a, we better use this mentality at the end of the year? And I guess the question is, how would you, how would you manage that? How would you mitigate for that?
Terry Willoughby for the record, I actually, Jenny and I both review budgets and actuals during the year, and question, is this something you're going to spend? So, we would make an adjustment, because we're basing it on actual expenses. So, typically, departments don't spend things they don't need it on. They think they need more, and when they provide their supplemental requests, they're provide, were asked to provide a lot of documentation. We do communicate with all of our directors closely and talk about their needs. I hope that, does that help?
It helps.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's a very good observation, and, and the public is, is obviously always concerned about that. You know, when you, when you budget something, then, then the feeling is, is if I don't use it, then I won't be able to get that kind of money back again the following year, right? So, so, the federal government does a very good job of that, I've noticed, in the, in the, when working with them on different things. But Ms. Willoughby's department seems to be, have a good handle on, on...
Terry Willoughby for the, part of that is because we do, I review any purchase over ten thousand dollars. So, if I saw, they have to do a purchase order and encumber it. So, there's a process they have to go through. They can't just buy, I worked in a county that shall remain unnamed, where at the end of the year, you would see loads of computers coming in because they had to spend their money. And so, we try and avoid that. And part of that is really reviewing the purchases on the front end. So, summary, we are financially healthy. We can fund some supplemental requests. I will give you my recommendations after Jenny reviews them. Appropriate funding has been included for the anticipated settlement of labor agreements in the base budget. And we can set aside potentially some funding for other salary adjustments, like the comp and class, or anything else, but we will talk about that after the supplementals. And the budget is financially sustainable for the general fund. Some future potential issues, again, the Stormwater Fund is entirely funded by the general fund. So, I'm not sure, that's, that's something we need to look at as we move forward to make sure that the Stormwater Utility is fiscally sustainable. Pending labor agreements, some costs are built into the base, but we have not settled yet, so I'm uncertain of that outcome. Class and compensation study results, we don't have those yet. Also, we will be issuing some debt for the courthouse. So, some potential issues there. At that, I'm happy to answer any questions that weren't.
Commissioner Turkanyan, any questions on this presentation?
No.
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hales?
I'm just wondering about, I don't know anything about this, but I would like to, the role of the IRC, and, and who may be on the IRC?
Terry Willoughby for the record, IRC is our internal review committee. It's considered a best practice. Actually, our internal auditors were very complimentary that we have this process. Anything that goes to the board, or typically, any contract or purchase needs to, over ten thousand dollars, needs to go through that committee. And the committee is made up, the county manager, assistant county manager, myself, Wendy Lang from Human Resources, and a district attorney representative. So, we all bring our strengths and our discipline to that committee, and collaborate together on decision-making.
So, you go, the, this committee goes over all expenditures over ten thousand dollars, and what else do they do?
Anything that goes to the board is reviewed there.
Budget.
Any budget matter. I can, part of, they were part of the budget review process, where we, I reviewed the supplemental requests in the budgets, as well as Jenny did. And I made certain recommendations based on the submissions of the supplemental requests. Supplementals are really designed to be, everything should be covered in writing. The document should be sufficient to explain to you, the board, what they're asking for. And so, some of the things, we would ask for additional documentation. And because everyone brings a different perspective, it was great to hear other people's thoughts and say, well, that doesn't make sense. What made sense to me might not make sense to somebody else. It's a very holistic approach.
Okay, this last item here, you have, need to build capacity for the judicial center. It's not a law enforcement center, it's going to be a judicial center.
It should have been, it should have read the new courthouse.
Pardon me?
It should have read the courthouse.
Yeah, okay. A new courthouse. And I know that we, last August, were looking at a financing plan. Are we, are we looking at any recommendations out of your department in the fiscal, in the next fiscal year in regards to the, that process?
Terry Willoughby for the record, yes, we will, I'm working with our financial advisor, JNA Advisors. We expect to bring something to the board fall timeline, to be able to issue debt in early next year, so we can start construction promptly.
Commissioner, Commissioner Noss, anything, any questions? Mr. Rice?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, where do we go from here? What's the next?
Terry Willoughby for the record, I'm going to turn it over to Jenny. She will give you kind of an overview of the supplemental requests, and then if you have any questions on the actual budget. And feel free to bring those questions back at a later date. If you see something that doesn't make sense, we're, we're here all week. So, show will go on. But I will turn it over to Jenny with the supplemental request, and then I'll kind of go through my recommendations.
Thanks, Terry. Jenny Cartwright for the record, just a quick housekeeping item. There are some larger print versions of the supplemental requests that have been handed out and available here at the table in the public meeting. And for those following online, we're on page one sixty-four of the supplemental agenda packet. If you're looking in your binder, we're on tab four, and there is a green page separator in the middle of tab four that separates the regular budget worksheets from the supplemental requests. So, I'll give you a minute to get there.
Are we gonna, or, so, Ms. Cartwright, are we planning on going through the supplemental request line item by line item? Is that?
Whatever is the pleasure of the chair.
I think that's probably a good idea, because I have some, some questions in regards to a number of these. So...
Certainly.
So, we're, we're talking about this, this handout you gave us earlier, this, this...
And Terry will be, Terry, you will not actually be voting on these today. So, you'll hear them, and then the last day, you will approve the budget, so you can pull things out, or whatever at that point.
Just want to make sure I'm all together with, so are we, are we talking about the first page of what we got today? Because it doesn't seem to line up with my tab under four, my, Jenny Cartwright for the record, there's a green separator page in the middle of tab four, so you, you want to start there. And there is an individual request page with full detailed information for each line item that is on the summary sheet that has been provided in eleven-by-seventeen format, that starts on page one sixty-four of the online Wonder if I should...
What was that page number again? One, one fifty-four?
One sixty-four of the online agenda packet. So, the first request is for a management analyst position in the finance department. It is, I just want to point out, these were in personnel and non-personnel and department order, so I don't want you to think that we're requesting finance first because we're here at the table. This request is for a position that would assist with the solicitation and evaluation process for bids and other procurements. It does fill an essential gap in the finance department to really oversee the entire procurement process and help departments to keep compliant with procurement laws and regulations. The next request is from the Tahoe General Services Department that's under the purview of the treasurer's office for a deputy court...
So, as we go through this, I just, just a comment to the other commissioners, as we go through this, if you have any questions about any of these items, we should discuss it at that time, so that we can kind of have a consensus so to speak on that item, and be able to ask questions. So, is there any questions on that item in particular? Commissioner Hales?
Forgive my confusion, but where in my hard packet, hard binder, am I going to find, I know I read it, but I can't figure out how we're coordinating here. The full sheet that describes that.
Yes. So, this is the first item that's listed on the full sheet, and then if you scroll to page two, excuse me, three of thirty-eight, page three of thirty-eight, in the second half of your tab four, sorry, tab, do I keep saying four? We're on three. That's my problem. Sorry. We're on tab three. My apologies.
She's there.
No, I was on four.
Okay, so we need to go to tab three, and turn to the, turn to the green page in tab three, and then, and then we have larger copies of the first few pages. So, in tab three, we want page three of thirty-eight. Is that right on this? Yeah, it's important that we all be on the same page here.
I'm with you now. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
All right. And Terry's gonna actually project this up on the screen for us, too, so we can hopefully all keep in step. And I will pause after each item in case there are any questions. So, I think we were at the end of item one, which was the management
And so, this is also where we're, where we're looking at additions to staff.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, yes, that is correct.
Either full-time positions or partial positions, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, to clarify, these are positions, these are personnel requests that were not in, they're not in the base budget. They would be supplemental. And so, they would, if you decide to approve them, then we put them in the final budget.
Okay. So, you indicated that we had a surplus of somewhere in the neighborhood of two million dollars? Is that right? So, so, going through this process would start eating into that surplus. Am I, am I correct?
Terry Willoughby, that is correct. And when we're done with the supplementals, I'll kind of show you what the numbers look like.
Okay, because, because that, yes, because that's gonna, you know, we may, we may, I don't know what the total requests are here, so we may get over that two million. And that'll have to, then we'll have to come back and try to prioritize, or what?
We're actually not over two million, so that's a good thing. So, I can share that with you now, if you would like, before you look at them. Okay.
I also have a question. Is the two million ongoing revenue?
Yes. Well, yeah, it's annual, it's operating revenue, yeah, yeah. Nothing, we don't budget for unusual stuff.
Right, just, just making sure.
And certainly not one-time funds. Okay, so, okay, so we've heard item number one, right? Any questions on item number one, folks?
I just had a question. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
The excess, the rainy day fund, or whatever you call it, we had a hundred in some days, I don't think it's a rainy day fund, it's the amount that we can fund the government. And I think you said it was a hundred and thirty-one days. Does this two billion include that, or is that separate?
Terry Willoughby for the record, that is separate. The two million is revenues over expenditures, current year.
Anticipated.
Thank you.
Anticipated, yes.
Anticipated. And I believe that number was one fifty-one, was it? I think that number was one hundred and fifty-one days of reserves.
That's the fund balance, correct, what we're projecting.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, so item number two, then, I guess?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, and just before we go too far, I did want to point out, there is a, a total page on page two of thirty-eight of your packet. So, if you go back to page two, all of these requests are totaled and summarized by personnel versus non-personnel. So, that sheet might help guide maybe some notes or things that you want us to follow up on or circle back on when we decide what's in and what's out. So, page two of thirty-eight, before we have to do...
So, total general fund, non-personnel, seven, nine-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars, is that right? And then, and then general fund supplemental requests, including, would that include personnel? The very last line, fifty, one, one-five-four-eight-three-two-five.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, yes, the total request for the general fund is one million, five-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
Okay. Okay. Of the fund balance of two million, so that's still going to leave a fund balance of half a million dollars in, in the neighborhood. million dollars in the neighborhood.
So then, on to page six of 38, excuse me, five of 38, we have the Tahoe General Services clerk, deputy clerk position. This is requested to increase an existing position from .475 FTE to 1 FTE due to increased needs in that office, particularly to support revenue collection and the passport programs. There is also an accompanying document that shows the number of transactions posted that this office processes, and that's on page eight of 38 of your packet, showing that they, they have processed 1,936 transactions back in fiscal year 19, so before COVID hit, and 1,733 passport photos.
Well, it's always easier to have a full-time person there than a half a person, right? I mean, because that assists our, our residents don't have to think about, you know, or go there and find out the office is closed, you know, so. Right, Ms. Bergens, this is your department, right? So.
Amy Bergens, Douglas County Clerk, Treasurer. So I know that this comes out of the Tahoe General Services Fund, but this is not a person for just at Tahoe General Services, and we are not bringing passports back just to the Tahoe office. This is a person that is similar to the current clerks that we have, they would be part of the clerk team, they would write minutes, they would do marriage licenses, fictitious firm names, but having this person be a full-time employee would allow us to have them travel to whatever office they are needed at for that particular day, and would also allow us to bring passports back to both locations. So we have already started the process to bring passports back. All of the clerks, current clerk staff have taken the training, and we are just waiting on the government to give us a thumbs up. So this would allow us to be able to open more appointments than we will be able to at the current staffing level.
Okay, so even though it's, so as you indicated, it's funded out of the Tahoe General Services Fund, however, that clerk will, will be able to be flexible and go where you and your office feel like they need to go for that particular day.
Correct, that is how we currently have our staff, is certain ones come out of certain budgets, but they really work at both locations.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the clarification. Any other questions in regards to that item? Okay, okay, we'll go to, I guess we'll go to number, item number three, which is on, what, page seven of 38? Eight of 38, yes.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, the next request is for an office specialist in the Animal Care and Services Department. This position is a slightly different classification than what the Animal Services Office has had in the past, and it really is to focus on those office support functions that are specific to the operations of animal services.
I think we're on page nine of 38. And 10 of 38. Move on? Okay, we'll go to the next one, juvenile probation, is that right?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, yes, the next request is also an office specialist in the Douglas County Juvenile Probation Department. Similarly, this position would support all the office-related functions of that department for duties that are more secretarial in nature, daily repetitive, supporting the staff there who are specialized in working with juveniles.
Teri Willoughby for the record, there is also a note on here that AB 251, sealing of records at 18 years of age, has created a backlog, which has added to the time effort, so that would be justification as well.
Where do we currently, I'm much familiar, pardon my ignorance, where do, where do we currently house juvenile probation? Is that in the JLEC Center? Is that Social Services Center? Where is that located?
I believe their offices are in the current JLEC, Mark, come in, that's the question. There are some at Tahoe because that's where the detention center is, but Mark, in how?
For the record, Mark Jackson, Douglas County District Attorney. The juvenile probation department is just down the hall from my office on the second floor of the Judicial Law Enforcement Center.
Thank you, I just was, didn't know. Fortunately, I don't deal with them very much, so, haven't for a while. Anyways, okay, any other questions regarding that? Commissioner Hales?
Well, just because it says this, I want to ask, did you clarify the chain of supervision for this position?
Teri Willoughby, that's been, that's been handled, yes.
Since no further questions, we'll go to item number five, juvenile detention.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, the next two requests are for youth detention counselor trainees in the juvenile detention department. They are essentially duplicates of each other but listed here separately for the consideration of the board to provide as individual requests rather than two FTEs together. And these would add to the FTE count in these departments to provide the essential services in the detention center, to make sure that there is correct staff to juvenile ratios, and there's complete descriptions provided in your packet.
Two part-time, not one full-time?
Teri Willoughby for the record, that is the request from the department because of staffing, shift staffing.
So is there indicating that this is a difficult, difficult position to fill? Is that, is that what I'm taking out of this?
Teri Willoughby, there were follow-up conversations with the department as to whether full-time or part-time.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, my apologies, these requests were originally part-time positions but have been updated to full-time, so you may be looking at something in a summary sheet that didn't get updated for the individual request. They are requesting two full-time positions, so page 13 of 38 has that full-time position box checked, as does page 15 of 38.
That, yeah, that's what I was looking at, because the request looked like it's 66,000, not, not the 21,000.
I will be sure to get that updated for our final decisions on supplementals.
Yeah, okay. Just to make sure we're all on the same page once again, right? Okay, any other questions in that regard? So we're looking at full, two full-time positions in juvenile detention.
Yes, and I would point out that the summary sheet on page two of 38 indicates 1 FTE and 66,504 each.
I'm sorry, that's still confusing to me, you know, are we looking at two positions or one position, two positions at 66 each, okay, rather than two positions at 21 each? So that's, that's a substantial difference in money, you know, you're going from, from 40,000 to 120, so we just need to make sure that's clarified.
Now I'm confused. I'm looking at this document, starting salary is 41,142, correct?
Jenny Carter for the record, yes, that is the base salary, but there are benefits, all the retirement, insurance, workers' comp, et cetera, that layers on top of that base salary to come to the 66,504 in, in the request per position.
I'm making 100,000 here.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, to clarify, the person will make 41,000 per year, and the request is for two people to work 40 hours a week, each working full-time.
Okay.
There was a, there was a change from the original submittal as the department reevaluated their needs based on upcoming projections of what their population will look like, what their current staffing, staffing levels look like, and their best assessment for, for how they need to staff this department up in the coming fiscal year. And that's why, in conjunction with conversations with HR and conversations with new management in that department, the request was updated from a halftime FTE, which is obviously less expensive, not just from a salary standpoint, but also from all those retirement benefits and workers' comp costs, that's why the cost of that increased.
Teri Willoughby, on the screen, you can see, this takes you from the 41,000 to the 66. So 41,000 is the salary, retirement benefits, 13,782, benefits, 9,500, Medicare, 597, unemployment costs, workers' comp, for a total of 66.
Are they, so who do they report, do they report to China Springs? Are they involved in China Springs? This is totally separate from China Springs?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, this is separate from China Spring, they report to the Director of Juvenile Detention.
Okay, 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 so it just needs to be clarified in the paperwork, right? So, okay, okay, going down to the number seven, community development, and there's, what is there, there's one, two, three, three items on that, is that right? So maybe, okay. Those are all in your department, Mr. Delair? Community development, building, create job for building inspectors, family, as long as you're here, I might as well call on you, right?
Tom Delair for the record, community development. The position, I think you're just looking at the position, right, for the building senior, and it would be in addition to our, our current inspection team. The other items, the three items you're referring to, I think she's going to, we're going to get to that here in a little bit, we're not there yet in the presentation.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, the 11 by 17 page with the summary information is included to demonstrate the process that we went through with IRC review and bringing these items to the board. So some of the items on that list are in the base budget, so they are already built in to the worksheets that we're going to look at, they're already built into the FTE presentation that we're going to have coming up in a couple of days. The, the requests for supplemental consideration are indicated on page two of 38 and also duplicated in their original request to IRC on your 11 by 17 sheet. So you're looking at the whole process when you look at that large 11 by 17 sheet of paper that's on page 164 of the packet, but you'll notice that some of, some of Mr. Delair's items are indicated as base budget, so they are not presented for supplemental consideration, they're already built into base. So he has one supplemental request for a building inspector senior lead.
I now see that. I see that, yeah, I see where you put supplemental and then two, two line items are a base, and so I didn't read all the way across when I first asked that question, so, so thank you. Questions, commissioners? No, okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Delair, appreciate it. Okay, so now we're going to item number eight, Senior Services, two DART drivers, exists on pay plan, department says, okay.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, just going in order of your individual page numbers, if you'll permit me to do that, page 20 of 38 is the homemaker, and then we have the DART drivers following, so. This request is included in the general fund supplementals because as Ms. Willoughby explained, there, there's a transfer from the general fund to senior services to shore up their budget as part of their funding, and so we wanted to present this as part of the general fund because any increase in FTEs or supplemental requests for social services will result in a transfer out of the general fund to, to fund those requests. So ultimately, the position will be housed in senior services and under the purview of senior services leadership, but the funding will need to come from a general fund transfer. So this request is for a, a homemaker position. It is requested at a full-time FTE to provide personal and household assistance to citizens and general cleaning preparation, household duties. It is an increase of an existing .475 FTE position to 1 FTE.
Okay, taking a half a person and then making them a whole person. All right, okay, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
You may not know the answer to this, but how many households would this person be able to assist?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, I do not have the answer to that, but we can certainly get that to you when the community services director makes a presentation later this week.
Okay, so we'll go now to the senior services DART, and that's an item that's near and dear to my heart, okay, because I can't tell you how many times I get questioned about a permanent scheduled DART service into South County, which does not exist currently. So we certainly have disproportionate service to sections of our county, and this would fulfill that need and greatly enhance the ability of our senior citizens, especially of moving from, from South County and getting into the shopping areas and medical facilities and the senior services that we offer in, in, in the body of the county, basically. So anyways, any questions by the commissioners on that one?
I just noted in the ride that it, in the write-up that it talked about both dial-a-ride and fixed services, and I just wanted to know more about our fixed, would this allow us fixed service daily to, or how often to South County, and, and how, and how would this impact dial-a-ride? Maybe they'll tell me later in the week.
Yeah, I do know a little bit about that information. Number one, we do have a dial-a-ride program that exists throughout the county, but that fee is like a buck, right? I think it's like a buck to call, dial a ride and get a, get a van and a driver out there, believe it or not. I mean, a buck, okay? But the problem is, you're, you know, for a, for a resident in South County, to do the dial-a-ride, you know, first of all, it has to be scheduled, it doesn't cost them a lot of money, but it has to be scheduled, and so you're, you're devoting with, rather than having a set route into South County that the residents can count on, on, maybe not, and I don't think this is intending to be on a daily basis, but on at least a couple days a week, we offer senior lunches to our residents in the Tahoe. We offer senior lunches to our residents in the Topeka Ranch Estates Community Center on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. This would allow us to have service into the county on Thursday, on Wednesday and Friday, South County, so that those seniors who want to use the lunches at our regular senior center can get up to do that. But can you imagine the expense of sending a truck, a van, and a driver on a Dial-A-Ride program for a buck to go down there, pick them up, bring them back up, and then go back down? That's, that's really inefficient service, in my mind, so.
So that's not happening now?
No. Well, the Dial-A-Ride is happening now. They still can, but it, but they have to get on a schedule, you know? It's not a set program. So that's what Senior Services is.
I'd be interested to know how frequently we have Dial-A-Ride rides in South County.
That's a good question for, for the Community Services Director, Tom Scott Morgan. I agree, it would be nice to hear that. The issue that I hear from, from residents is that it's, it's infrequent service, they have to, they have to call to get it, and just having a set schedule, and that's, and that's any, any public transportation system. When somebody wants to go to use that, they, they go to that kiosk or whatever, they look at the schedule, they know when it runs, I have to be there at certain times, I'm gonna return at certain times. And, and we don't have any types of processes over that right now in South County, so.
I'm not asking because I question it. I'm, I'm supportive.
Yeah.
But I'm interested.
No, I, I knew you weren't, no, I know you weren't questioning it as a disagreement. So, yeah. It's, it's been a challenge, okay? It's, it's been a real challenge. I tried to institute a volunteer service four years ago and just couldn't get that off the ground. But the residents really would like to know that, okay, the, the DART service is gonna be here on Wednesday mornings at such and such a time and return at such and such a time, so I could plan my schedule. Same thing on Fridays, the same type of thing, so. And that's, and that's what we have to do, is we have to provide a definitive ride program so they can take advantage of it and be confident that when they go there, the van's gonna be there and take them, so.
Which ultimately would be more efficient than Dial-A-Ride.
Yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely. Cost-efficient as well, yeah. Sorry, got sidetracked there.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, one other thing I did want to point out about the Homemaker and DART drivers positions is that they're indicated that they would be partially grant-funded. So for the Homemaker position, the General Fund would be funding 64% of the cost of that position. And for the DART drivers, only 20% of the cost is anticipated to be from the General Fund as a match for an 80% grant-covered service, so.
Even better good news, right?
Terry Willoughby, Commissioner Tarkanian has his hand raised. I don't know if he has.
No, it's not raised.
Yes, yes, it is. Okay.
Okay. Okay, the next item is what, County Manager, is that? Oh, no, that's in the base, right?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, that concludes the Personnel-related supplemental request for the General Fund. Moving on to page 24 of 38, we have the County Manager Economic Development request for the Tahoe Prosperity Center contract. This is a contract.
Can I ask something real quick before we get off that now that you're off Personnel? Do you guys hear me? Can you hear me or not?
No, we, we only caught the like last few words, Commissioner Turkey.
Okay, well, I'll try, I'll try to ask a question. If not, I'll do it when I get back. Can you hear me okay right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We just, I think it was 11 or 12 new Personnel positions we're gonna possibly fund to the supplemental. It's my understanding the supplemental is available because we have excess revenue and which we have this year. What happens when we don't have excess revenue and you already have these positions in place? How are we gonna fund them?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, Commissioner, it's an option to fund these Personnel? They, they are not in the base budget, it's up to the Board's discretion. They are not requesting because there's money available, they're requesting because they've identified a need. So it's up to us and the, us to make a recommendation as administrators and the Board to make that decision. And of course, if at some point there is no additional revenue, then we would be looking at reducing Personnel, we would be doing other cost-cutting measures, and I hope that helps.
So, yes, it did, and that's what I thought. So I guess my next question is, none of us are involved in the day-to-day operations of these different departments that are asking for the additional Personnel, so we don't know which ones are in the most need. Is there someone from the County Staff that's gonna advise the Board that, hey, we think these are the top priorities, going from strongest to, to maybe less priority?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, I will be providing that at the end of the supplemental requests.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess we go to number, County, item number 11, right? County Manager Economic Development, increase in Tahoe Prosperity Contract from $10,000 per year to $30,000 per year. Do you like to speak on that, Mr. Cates? I, I, so here's, I'll, I'll pull you off the hook there, okay? I just, you know, last year, this center came to us requesting ARPA funds for the study of affordable housing in our community in the Tahoe Basin. And, you know, it just doesn't meet the demographics of our community, in my mind, that. And so, and then this, I've taken a look at this Envision Tahoe Playbook, and, you know, while they are looking at the ecosystem and the, and the environmental concerns of the Tahoe Basin, there's 30 other organizations that participate in that activity. How much more do we want to, you know, how much do we want to take public funds and devote to that process? So I'm not, I'm not convinced this is a wise expenditure, in my mind. So I don't know how the other Commissioners feel about it.
Mr. Chairman, the Tahoe Prosperity Center is a program that this county has been involved in for many years. And the idea is to bring jobs and, and bring the workers into an area that is desperately in need of the jobs and workers. And I, I think that this is money well-spent on the county's behalf.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Hales.
I, I, I see some merit in it. I would like to know, how many people do we have working in Nevada, living in California on the South Shore? And I don't know if that number's available, but to me, it would be an indication of the integrated nature of that economy there. And if we rely on workers in California to run some of our establishments that bring us tax dollars, then it makes sense to me to support housing whichever side of the state line it's, it's on. And so there may be other indicators of how that economy is integrated there, but because of that, I'd be interested in considering funding.
This is going from, and we already, we already do involve ourselves in this, in this by $10,000. This is, this is basically tripling the amount of investment, and that's what I'm not sure about, is tripling the amount of the investment. I'm not sure that $10,000 needs to be tripled to three, $30,000, basically. So I don't have any problem with the 10. I'm just questioning whether or not it's a wise investment for the other 20. But I'm only one person here on this Board, so contrary to popular, or at least one member of the public who keeps talking about the bully pulpit. I don't have a bully pulpit here, and anybody that sits in this chair is not, does not have a bully pulpit, okay? I'm just one of five, so Commissioner Nolasad, you wanna, you take a shot at this, or are you comfortable with this?
I'm just, I'm just saying I support your view.
So Commissioner Tarkanian, would you like to weigh in on this?
Can you hear me okay? Hello?
Yep.
Just a second. Can you hear me okay? I'm trying to handle two things at once.
Okay.
Look, I, I met with the lady from the Prosperity Fund, she showed me the things that they were involved in. I told her I wasn't supporting money to go into affordable housing, as I don't see there being a return off that, because I don't believe the government is going to be able to force affordable housing in Lake Tahoe, at least with the principle that I believe in. But she said there was other things that they would do, and she sent me a packet, all looked very good. Is part of this $30,000 the entire programs that they're doing, or is it just for affordable housing?
I, I see it, I see it as they're, I mean, they, they do have, as I look at it, Commissioner Tarkanian, they, they do have some very worthwhile things that they involve themselves in beyond taking a look at affordable housing. So.
If this includes all of their programs, then I wouldn't have a problem in increasing their amount, although it's triple, it's not very much money, and they're doing some good things up there. If this money's gonna go to affordable housing, I wouldn't be in favor of it.
The description's on page 24 of 38, behind tab three, and it does include all their other things, broadband, fire, early fire detection, some other things.
Chair, if I can interject real quick.
Sure.
Just putting it in the budget doesn't mean that you automatically need to spend the money on with them. They could be requested to come back for a presentation, and then you could agree to some kind of amended agreement with them to increase their funding.
I would prefer that. I'm a little bit at a disadvantage because I haven't had the computer access until this morning, and I haven't been able to go over what I would like to have, and I thought I would be back in town in person today, but there was a airline strike. So I'm not entirely clear enough, but if there's enough votes without mine, go ahead and do it if you need mine, I'd like to have them make the presentation.
So we'll return to this item at a later date.
Mr. Chairman, I would highly recommend that we have Lisa Granahan come in and talk to us, she's intimately involved in this program. I have been, attended many meetings with, with her and the other people involved in Tahoe Prosperity. It's not just about workforce housing. There, there's so much, there's so much interconnectivity between Douglas County, El Dorado County, South Lake Tahoe, for, for the places that we have that bring in a great deal of our budget. They rely on workers from California because they can't afford to live in Nevada, that are, if they do live in Nevada, they're gonna have to go up and down Kingsbury Grade every doggone day. And trust me, having to come down every once in a while can be a real pain. But that, we rely, the, Douglas County relies, 40% of their budget comes from Lake Tahoe. And if we lose the workers that come in from California, if we start losing the revenues that are generated in Lake Tahoe, you're gonna feel the pinch here in the valley.
The other information I might like to have is, what is our total economic vitality budget, and how does this relate to that amount?
And Terry Willoughby, for the record, I can certainly have Lisa come in and give a presentation. I'll arrange that for her for one day this week.
Okay. So we'll anticipate speaking with her later on this week, isn't that, is that right? Is that what I heard? Okay.
As far as I know, I will communicate with Lisa. Unless she's out of, on vacation or something.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we'll go on to the next one, and that's, let's see, the Kirk and election replacement of ballot printers, and that's in the base already, so we don't have to talk about that, right? Technology Services. And you wanna speak to that?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, just to answer your question, Commissioner Hales, the total economic development budget is $290,535 proposed for this upcoming year. And moving on to the Microsoft Unified Support Request, this is a request that really came as a result of the implementation of Microsoft 365 and the experiences that our IT department is having when they require support from Microsoft. This contract would essentially place us in a priority queue so that we can get the services that we need during those critical times of needed support, rather than sort of standing in line behind all the other Microsoft users.
So this would be a support contract, that would be a one-year contract. Is it a one-year contract?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, yes.
To the $275,000, so I don't doubt that we need it, it's just that it seems like it, we're getting into that position where more and more of these items are going to contracts rather than buying a program, so to speak, but.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, just to clarify, we do have the software as a separate purchase, so this is, this is more of the, the technical support for that software that's used countywide to, to support our email and Intranet services. I'm stumbling here because I'm not an IT professional, but we, we use a lot of products with Microsoft 365, so those are purchased separately. This is not a software purchase, it's under software because it's related to that use of it, but it's not buying the software. We did already purchase the Microsoft 365 product, and that is included in the base budget for the ongoing licensing fees for the software. This is when you need help, when IT department needs help from Microsoft, they can pick up the phone and get ahold of someone quickly.
Yeah, but $75,000, it seems like we're almost paying for one person to be on-call for us 24/7.
Well, I think that's a not-to-exceed number, so it is, they've compared that to calling per, paying per individual call, which is what I think we're doing now or going to have, have to do. And plus, these people are the experts in Microsoft 365, and they're up to date on the products versus some, a staff person who doesn't spend all their time on Microsoft 365 and has to do other things like hook up printers and network issues.
And I see here, under an IRC comment, can gaming revenue be used? What did we determine in that regard?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, yes, that comment was happening amidst the submittal of the transfer of gaming revenue from Fund 410 into the General Fund. So there is gaming revenue that will be in the General Fund budget for the upcoming fiscal year that can be used to support this, actually all IT requests.
That's what we did just a few, just a meeting ago or two, right? We, we talked about, it was one meeting, last meeting, we had that on the, on the agenda, yeah. Approving that, yeah. Okay. That transfer. Commissioners?
I should have to make a comment. Having spent some hours of my life on hold that I will never get back. I'm probably not an impartial person to make a judgment on this, but yes.
Okay. We'll see how much time they spend on hold, you know, if we have a priority rating, but, okay. Of course, that all depends on how many people they have at the other end of the line, right? So. So... Okay, no other questions? We'll go to item number, what, 13, for tech, also technology services, will put switches on replacement schedule.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, Commissioner Hales, I would point out that when you're IT, you also have 600 angry county users waiting for the system to be fixed as well, so there's some pressure there. The switch replacement is something that we are trying to build more into our base budget. We want general, ongoing equipment and IT infrastructure replacements to be in the base budget, so this is requested as an ongoing expense, but is coming before you as a supplemental this year, because it hasn't been built in before. So this is a request to replace the switches on an ongoing basis. They'll cycle them out on an eight-year cycle. The $85,000 would be built in on an ongoing basis, not as a supplemental, but in our base budget going forward. It really is essential spending. I did try to get some layman's description of what switches do, so you can see that these are the hardware appliances that connect our internal network.
Okay, but this isn't going to be $85,000 a year. This, the $85,000 is for hardware that will last eight years? Is that, is that the anticipation here?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, this is $85,000 per year to ensure that all switches can be replaced every eight years.
Terry Willoughby for the record, so...
One, one year? Okay.
If I could add, we are attempting to get more departments to be proactive like this, so we don't have equipment failures and emergencies and things like that, like put as many things as you can possibly think of on a regular maintenance and replacement schedule, so that we have more of a consistent budget, so we don't have big swings.
So the anticipation is, once we did this $85,000 this year, then in future years, it'll be probably a part of the base budget?
That's correct.
Any other questions about that? No? Okay. And now, item number 14, new server hardware to replace main data center VMware, whatever that means. Ms. Cartwright?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, this request is on page 28 of 38. This is a new server hardware to essentially provide a backup or redundancy service or infrastructure for catastrophic failure. So we have built in funding for ongoing operations server hardware that went through that process I just described for the last request, where last year, we said, okay, we need to replace these servers every year, so let's do a supplemental request, and then build it into the base budget going forward. That's to keep sort of the wheels on, the day-to-day operations of our IT systems. This request is to make sure that we have that resiliency for times when our systems go down, we have a redundant backup, and we need servers for that purpose, which is why it's a supplemental request.
Would, I just read the description here. Would the backup, the backup hardware itself and the software on another site, is that accounting, is that included in the possible replacement of that site?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, this is, this is a one-time request, so because it's a standalone item that doesn't, it doesn't have the ongoing nature of cycling a whole bunch of hardware to replace all the time, it's submitted as a one-time request.
Our manager, Cates, has his hand up. Oh, I'm sorry.
Right. You're, basically what you're saying, you have a mirror system here. A equals A in the different sites. But the A is what we use today. The A other A is going to be continually using, being used. Don't you think that it might wear out soon, sometime along? And how do you back that up?
For the record, Patrick Cates, pardon me, a little bit of context and background on this request. When, when I had started, we had continual audit findings that our data center was in the basement of this building. The board approved funding, the year before last, I think it was, to move that data center, and we completed that project, and we moved our data center into the second floor of the Public Works Building of the city of Townamenden. So that moved our data center off-site. What this request is to add a server back in this location as a backup to that main data center, now that we vacated and having your data center in a basement and subject to flooding and that sort of thing is a risk factor. So we moved it to a better location. This will allow us to back that location up, and it would be in the basement of this building.
So what I hear you saying is, whatever we have here now will be replaced.
Yeah, there's nothing here now, because we've moved all that equipment. I shouldn't say all the equipment. We still have some switches, and there is some infrastructure that is here, but the server farm, our main server farm, is over at the new location. And so we didn't have this kind of backup before, so this isn't replacing any of that equipment. It's adding a new piece of hardware to have that backup capability, which is a new capability for us.
Okay.
As long as we're going down that road, I mean, so we recognize the need to get it out of this basement for potential flooding or other issues that would occur, so we moved it over to the Townamenden. Now we're looking at moving it back into here that could incur the same disruptions of that equipment, so I, I'm not sure that's really a wise concept to me, you know, if we're going to, and I am sensing out of the department heads in this building that we're running out of room, and we may potentially need to move one or other, one department or another out of this building, just because of the expansion of those departments, so... But I would assume if we're, if this is going to be hardware, then we'll have, still have the ability to move it somewhere else if we decided that that department or another department needed to move to some other facility within the county. Is that right?
For the record, Patrick Cates, yeah, that is right. I think the reason they're looking at putting it in this location is because it's already, we already have the infrastructure for a server room, basically, and it could be moved later on, for sure, and we have talked about moving, moving people around to make more space in this building for offices, but the server room itself's very small. It doesn't take a big footprint.
Okay, so you're saying even if that, even if we made that decision, this would just still, okay, would probably still exist in there, doesn't have to be right with that department necessarily?
No, no, doesn't have to be housed with personnel, they just need access to it. And, you know, arguably, putting it back in a basement is less than ideal, but we have the infrastructure there, and it is a backup, you know, that I think more importantly is having two sites where we can have our data and be able to access them. It's unlikely both would go down at the same time.
Yeah, thank you. You made that very clear. Two mirrors facing each other.
Yes.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, maybe getting into the weeds, but... Okay, Ms. Cartwright?
I'll actually turn this over to Terry Willoughby for the next couple.
Terry Willoughby, the first one is the cost of running fiber to 1133 Spruce, which is also known as the former Social Services Building, which would be opened up, by running fiber to that building, it would open up some use as office space. It's currently primarily vacant, and it uses a spectrum connection and then VPN to get into the county network, and this will allow direct fiber connection into the county and allow county offices to be in there. We're all space crunched.
Is, so I, and I, once again, I'm not real sharp on this, is fiber different from broadband?
Broadband goes over fiber.
Broadband is over fiber. So I do know that there are still funds in the state ARPA funds in regards to broadband expansion. Have we looked into the possibility of tapping into that process versus the county funding that?
I will look into that with Daniel. I think he has. We're trying to reserve that for the broader, bigger project of broad, bringing broadband to all residents, but I'd be happy to look at that with him. So fiber, direct fiber would be a direct connection to the network, which is what this is asking for, instead of going through a VPN, which is not a direct connection, so we'd have increased speed and reliability.
Just a thought, just an idea.
Yeah, we'll look at it.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm a real novice at this kind of stuff. I, you know, I just want to turn on my computer and be, you know...
We all want it to work. That's the end of the, at the end game, it's like, yes.
Okay. Sorry for the, for the questions. Okay, and then we had, and then ClearPass Software Hardware Solution, item 16.
Terry Willoughby for the record, this would involve Wi-Fi. The county's current Wi-Fi solution involves Wi-Fi that is part of its own internet connection via spectrum connection and does not tie into the county network. Users of Wi-Fi have to connect to the Wi-Fi, which sometimes works and sometimes doesn't, as we know, and this will improve the performance of that.
And so this is an actual, okay. Any questions? Shouldn't see none? Okay, go on to the next one.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, the next request is on page 31 of 38, for the Axon Body worn Cameras and Tasers. These are existing services that the Sheriff's Department had procured under a previous contract. They're looking to add some services and product to their next contract, so the supplemental request is to add $62,778 to the upcoming contract per year, and that will include 60 less lethal, less lethal tasers, try saying that fast, because the existing tasers are at their end of life. It'll also come with an annual supply of cartridges for those tasers, and I learned something new, there's software that supports tasers. Who knew? So that's also part of this new agreement that they're going to have under this request. So there are some items in the base budget for the existing contract, because we've been paying that $121,000 a year up until now, but the request will increase that by $62,778 in this coming fiscal year, and you'll note that they're bundling, they're receiving a bundling discount by purchasing the tasers and cameras together, so that's, those services can both be provided by Axon, the vendor, and entering into a five-year contract, which...
Already built into the base, right? So we can go to item number 18? Is that right?
The next request is for the in-house training close quarters battle for the Sheriff's Department, to send 30, up to 30 officers to tactical training. It breaks down to about $1,333 per employee, and would be housed locally, so there's no travel or hotel costs per DM, that sort of thing involved.
No questions?
I have no questions, but I will make a comment that regarding the incident last week, that could have easily turned into something that actually was an active duty, an active shooter, and I think that our officers deserve all the training in this area that we can give them.
I wouldn't disagree, because what they gain in, in training will help protect our citizens as well as themselves, so that's important.
One thing I can attest to is, when, when you're in an emergency situation, you revert to your training, and I would prefer to see our officers well-trained, because sometimes you don't have time to think, the training just takes over.
Okay. No other questions? Go to item number 19.
Next request is for a vehicle for the Emergency Management Division. This is part of the transition from using East Fort Fire to having this under the county's purview, and the request is for the emergency manager to have a four-wheel drive or all-wheel drive utility vehicle.
Okay. Any questions about that? Would this be a pool vehicle, or would it be assigned to the emergency manager?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, it is assigned to the emergency manager. Through, it's handled through motor pool, so all of the replacement schedule and vehicle maintenance is handled through the motor pool department, but it's intended to be assigned to the Emergency Management Department.
Okay, and as such, and maybe this is a question for our county manager, Patrick Cates, as, as this vehicle's assigned to them, would that be a vehicle that they would be using for personal use to and from their residence to county offices, or, what, how do you anticipate using that?
Sure. For the record, Patrick Cates, no, we don't envision this vehicle being used for commuting for an employee. The only employees in the county that do that are law enforcement. However, if there were a need to respond to an emergency, or we are anticipating an emergency event, we do, just as an example, utility employees are authorized, depending on circumstances, to take a vehicle home for response purposes, but as a matter of course, in personal use and commuting, no. No, absolutely not.
It would seem to me to be appropriate for the individual, we just hired a lady by, Cara Easton, is that correct? During the process of an emergency, it seems to me that they would be able to certainly, because we'd want them on the job immediately, you know, during an emergency, perhaps, use that vehicle to go to and from their residence for a non-specified period of time, right? That seems appropriate to me, that's all.
Terry Willoughby for the record, there are very stringent IRS regulations about who can take home vehicles and when it's taxable income compensation, and we, the county follows that, so typically, we don't allow take, take-home vehicles unless there is an emergency situation.
Because then they'd really be on the job, so to speak.
Absolutely correct.
Yes.
If I could, so the county manager's office has two vehicles, and they're basically treated like motor pool vehicles. I don't take them home, no employee takes them home to commute with. However, we have had times, because of a training in Reno, or an emergency response, or whatever, that we've allowed from time to time, somebody take a vehicle home if it made sense to their job and their response, and I could see how that was... And I could see how that would apply to an emergency manager, probably more than a lot of other department heads.
And do you imagine this vehicle will be identified as the emergency management vehicle, or?
For the record, Patrick Kates, yeah, we have not thought about that. I'm just happy to get somebody on board, and they can help shape the program, and if they want some badging or something, we can talk about that.
I had a question with respect to the cost of the vehicle and the salary and whatever other cost for this new department. How is it compared to what East Fork was getting paid? Are we keeping it within that budget, or has it gone over that or under that?
For the record, Patrick Kates, so this off the top of my head, but the county was giving East Fork a little under $200,000 in general funds, and then grant money as well, all totaled, it was about a quarter million dollars. And we are anticipating keeping this program within that. Basically, we have a director and another position that we're approved. This is a startup cost of a vehicle. Apologies. So I'm not entirely sure how that pencils out for this year with the capital purchase, but yeah, it's our goal to keep that within the same funding ranges that we are giving East Fork.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Any additional questions? Okay. We'll go to the next item.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, I'm happy to hand this over to Tom Delair, Community Development Director.
Tom Delair for the record, and first off, I just want to say thank you to Terry and her team and Jenny for all their hard work on this. This is, this budget stuff is really complicated, and we've thrown them a lot of paperwork, and they've really done a good job at deciphering it all. But these three requests that we have limited, or narrowed this down to is really just an update to the Douglas County Code Title 20. We've got a lot of images that are in our current code that are old and antiquated. We've downloaded a lot of versions of some other codes, and we want to get all of the images to be unified in that. And so this is, a portion of this funds will be for that. We've also found that our Tahoe-Douglas area plan was basically a South Shore Area Plan document that with just renaming the name South Shore Area Plan. And so we are going to need to start that process on having a consultant help us with that, to get this across the finish line in order to keep TRPA a little happy on our end. So I'm not sure, I haven't identified exactly how much those are going to be, images are going to be in the code, and what exactly that Tahoe plan is going to be, but we wanted to throw a number at it right now, and we thought the $100,000 was, would be good. Whether it's 40, 60, or 60, 40, we'll see how it goes, but that's what we're anticipating. The master plan update, we came to you in 2020 with an update to the plan. Those, that plan is supposed to be updated every five years, and we're going to need to start working on that update at the end of this year. And I'm hoping to be in a contract with that support as well. And then by the end of this, by the end of this year. And then the transportation plan is usually a 10-year update. That was started in 2015. There was some contract revisions in 2017, and the document itself was approved finally in 2019. And we are working on a number of items right now with Campo. You guys approved a contract with them this past month and a half or so, and we're waiting on an overall model, on that traffic model between Carson City and Douglas County, which is going to give us a good indication of the traffic and how it moves in our region, not just the county. And once we get that, I would like to start working on identifying specific intersections that need to be looked at specifically and designed appropriately, so we know what the level of service is going to be when a certain development comes in, and we'll be able to identify cost shares at that point for these developments. We don't have that in our plan today. That is how other regional transportation commissions operate, and I need to get our plan updated into that position, in that, in that manner, so that we can justify and show the developer really what costs are going to be incurred once their development is built out. And so this is the first step in that plan, but I need that model done by Campo in order to start that work. And so we ask for $100,000 to start that effort. And I'm available for any questions.
Commissioner Turcini, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you. Commissioner Hales? No sad, Rice? No. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Delair. Wow, you thought, you thought it was going to be more difficult than that? Why don't you come back to the microphone? We can try, we can. We can. So I am excited about, we asked earlier, you know, basically back in January, I think it was, about Title 20 and the master plan, so hoping we can go forward with both of those. We still need to take a look at the strategic plan, but I think that's on us, not the community development, so, okay. Okay. And then I guess the, okay, so, and then the next item was in the base, and then the next item, the vehicle for VHR manager, has, that request has been withdrawn? Okay? We have enough fleet vehicles for him to use one, right? Okay. Good deal. We can't possibly be on the last page, can we? There's only one item on it? Weed control.
What kind of weed are we talking about?
Well, I, I don't know that we're going to build, I don't know that we're going to have any weeds this year if the snow keeps falling, right? So.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, the final supplemental request for the general fund is for the weed control side-by-side vehicle that replaces existing equipment that's over 10 years old. This unit would be trailered between the lake and the valley to service both regions of the county.
And Terry Willoughby for the record, this is one of those items where we would like to see these on replacement schedules, instead of something that's 10 years old and in constant need of repair. Let's, we want everybody to be more proactive of thinking about things before they break. And sometimes you can't do that, but we're going to try.
And I do want to clarify, the dollar amount of the request is $26,000, based on a quote that we received from the department after the IRC review documents. So your larger 11 by 17 sheet, or packet page 166 online, shows 35,000, I believe? Nope, 34,000.
34, yeah. I was going to ask that question, so you just answered it.
The request is for 26,000.
Okay. Any questions about that? Commissioners?
No, sir.
Nope? Okay. That concludes the supplementals?
Commissioner, very happy to have good weed control.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, I believe Terry has some additional information, sort of summary overview, funding information.
Terry Willoughby for the record, we started with a $2.1 million surplus, that's the current revenue over expenditures. I then added back in the capital expenditures that are in the base budget, because those are appropriate to use from fund balance. So that leaves 2.5 million to work with. We had supplemental requests of 1.5 million. I have withdrawn my request for a management analyst at this time. I have no space for them to begin with, and I would like to get through the work with Civic Initiatives is working on, that they presented on last week. I think it will be needed. I think it's, we need someone to centralize the contract management, but not at this time. So I'm withdrawing that. The master plan and transportation plan is something that I've worked with Tom on, so we would, the timing of when he needs to appropriate that money is not right this minute, but we could fund it through adjusted opening fund balance, which would make it not part of this balanced budget. And then we had several capital requests, like the side-by-side, and these things that are one-time, and those are, again, appropriate to take from fund balance. So that would leave our adjusted supplemental requests at 698, so that would leave about 1.8 million available after the supplemental request. My recommendation to the board, and I did leave a placeholder for Tahoe Prosperity, we can play with that later. That's really the one I heard that there was a question on. I feel like the departments did a very good job this year of only submitting personnel requests that they felt that they, that they needed and would create efficiencies. For example, perhaps we don't want juvenile detention officers doing office duties. It makes more sense to have, to centralize those office tasks and have a secretarial administrative person do that, as well as at animal control. We don't want the animal control officers doing the office work, they should be doing the animal control work. So I thought the personnel requests all made sense. So I didn't, I included those in the supplemental, leaving them as approved. What I would recommend is that we earmark a dollar amount for potential personnel. We do not know the outcome of labor negotiations. We also don't know the outcome of the class and comp. I would recommend at least 1.2 million that be earmarked as a line item budget in personnel. You wouldn't be approving any of that. We would just put it in the budget, so it's funded, and then we would come back and we could move it into the appropriate line items, once those agreements are approved, and once the class and comp adjustments are approved by the board. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I felt like there was enough consensus on the Tahoe Prosperity that it was going to be 30. It's just that we wanted to hear from them a little bit more about what they're going to use it for, so I'd be comfortable in moving that 30 back up there, and then.
Yeah, I didn't take it out.
So at least we, at least we know what the number's going to be.
Okay. I didn't take it out of the supplementals, I just left a placeholder for it, so it's still in there.
What's that?
I didn't take it out, I just left a placeholder. So the only things I'm removing are capital, one-time requests, the master plan and transportation plan, which is still a yes, but we're going to fund it through adjusted opening fund balance a little late, later on in the year, and I did remove the request for a management analyst.
Okay, so the net, the net available surplus of 18, 11, so that already has that 30 taken out of there?
Absolutely, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. That's fine. Okay. So we just want to hear from them, just to feel more comfortable about what we're doing there, so, okay. You good with that? Okay. Okay. Where do we go from here today, then?
That, you will not vote on anything today? I would like to hear what your feelings are about earmarking some funding.
Oh.
We could earmark the entire.
Don't everybody speak at once.
Well, and options are, again, you're not going, this is not approving the expenditure. It's merely approving a budget. We don't have to spend it, but if we put it aside, it does make it easier, rather than having to augment the budget, we could say it's in the budget, and we're still balanced.
I think what Terry's saying is perfect. It sets the money aside, and we can allocate it to a point if we feel it's necessary.
Yeah. And then if you don't spend it, it just rolls into fund balance, and.
Well, the term earmark sort of set me up, set me back a bit.
Commissioner Hales, it looks like you were getting ready to say something now? Okay. Yeah, I, it's always nice to be in the black instead of in the red, okay? And trying to figure out who we're going to have to make cuts to, right? Always have been, you know, what bills we're not going to pay, or be able to pay. Did that give you enough direction?
Yes, I will bring back the schedule at the final day of budget, and then we, you guys will vote on the supplementals. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So are, are we done with item number three, then, I take it?
We're done with today.
Are we going to then, where are we headed here today? Are we done for the day, or, we're done for the day?
Terry Willoughby for the record, the intent was to get through the general fund, which is the hardest day. It's got the most moving parts today. And then the other days are smaller, and I think you could be finished by Thursday and wrap up.
Then with that, so was this item, this wasn't item number four, this was item number three, or this was item number four? Three, right? Yes, because it was an overview of the county general fund and how we got there, right? Okay. But we did go into the.
Jenny Cartwright.
Supplemental requests.
For the record, so item three was the presentation that Terry did after lunch on the PowerPoint, and then item four was the general fund, all departments, including supplemental requests.
Okay, so we were into item number four, that I did not read into the record, right? So anyways, yeah, I didn't read that portion into the record, which I probably should have, but anyways, because we are in item four, and it's for possible action, we should have public comment then on that item, is that right, Mr. Ritchie? Okay. So, okay, then what we'll do now is, before we go to closing public comment, we will have public comment on item four, for possible action, which was, I want to put that in the record, which was the discussion to approve the fiscal year 2324 tentative budgets for all Douglas County and Douglas County Redevelopment Agency funds. Discussion may include a general overview of the Douglas County budget and presentation by staff, including but not limited to presentations on the following: general fund, all departments, including supplemental requests, special revenue funds, including supplemental requests, debt service funds, enterprise funds, including supplemental requests, internal service funds, including supplemental requests, capital project funds, including supplemental requests, redevelopment agency funds. That was presented by CFO Terry Willoughby and Finance Director Jenny Cartwright. Is there any public comment at this time on that particular budget item? Or agenda item?
Can I, excuse me, can I? Terry Willoughby for the record, just to clarify, there's no, we're not actually asking for a decision today. That is kind of made at the end of, like.
I understand, we're not going to come back for emotion, but we do, because it says for possible action.
Yeah. Well, in case you wanted to, like, say, sure, go ahead, today, approve it.
No, no.
Yeah, you have the option.
No, but you got, did, did get some direction from us today, okay? So, okay, public comment.
I want to thank Terry Willoughby and the staff. It was really clear, easy presentation to follow. I appreciate that, someone from the audience, thank you. One item that was mentioned about the DART, the, certainly his value in regular bus routes. As my wife's in dialysis, and I see how many people arrive with a dialer ride to dialysis, how essential that is for them to stay in their homes. So let's just point out the value of both things. It's nice to have regular bus lines, but a dialer ride is essential for many people. May not be a ton of people on that bus, maybe two, but they couldn't get the medical services they need without it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment here in chambers? Okay, then we'll bring it back to the board, and now we'll ask for, okay, so there's no action required for this, by this board at this time on this, we will have an opportunity to do that at a later date, right? So, okay, so we can then therefore go to closing public comment. Is there any closing public comment here in chambers? Sensing none, we will, at this time, adjourn the meeting until, and we will resume in session tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM, and go through other sections of our budget. So, nice job, guys, I think, right? So, okay. Commissioner Turcini, and thank you for participating long distance, and we appreciate your involvement, so. So anyways, with that said, the meeting is hereby adjourned and we'll resume.